Okay folks, thanks for all for coming. I hope you had a good holiday. Welcome to our budget workshop and some other items. And Mr. Clerk, if you please call the board.
Mike Kramer.
Here.
Vance.
Here.
Delahay.
Here.
Rees-Meier.
Here. Okay, public comment on agenda items. Chief.
Wow, same rules apply.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
I think you've all heard it. Everybody's been there.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Well, I was gonna speak.
Go ahead.
Well, we're gonna...
No, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to talk about the, um, when we get up here.
Please.
Yeah, please do.
Okay. Last week in our planning work...oh. How's that? Is it better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, last week in our...you got new stuff here, right? It's better.
Just did that.
Um, last week in the planning workshop, we brought up the budget for the Planning Commission, and there was a big discussion on one item, and you and I, Bob, had talked about it. It's like funding for the IRC, training and development of things that come. And Don went through everything with you last week, and you and I talked about it. So, I would hope that you would revisit that and make sure that you don't throw it to baby with the bathwater, because there's a lot of good things that could happen with that for smart streets and for businesses. And we already have one business that's trying to apply for that. So, take a good look at that. And the Planning Commission, you know, we don't have to be the person that's trained. You can bring somebody on the board to do that. And according to Pablo, it's a staff member that has to be trained. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mike. Any more public comment? Public comment is closed. Okay, so, let's start forward, if you don't mind, with revenue side, okay? That $265,000, thanks to help from the chief and verification by the county, 101.000.402.00. Now is 293, comma, 122.09. Okay, then down on where it says state shared revenue, sales use is 101.000.574.00. Instead of 310 should be 337, comma, 360. And that's verified by multiple township treasurers who referred me to the state website on three different occasions, and it all checked. Then I'd like to go down three more lines. Charges for services rendered parks. And we didn't really capture for parks, the $12,000 which goes into their special fund, or whatever you call...what do you call that fund?
I'm not sure. I'm following where...
What, you know, the $66,000 funding?
General fund prioritize for parks.
Okay, thank you. So...
I didn't hear what he said. Is it called?
Well, it's in the general fund as a priority for parks.
So, that wasn't in there. We know it's $12,000, and we know that they get, you know, other things for renting facilities and stuff. So, I'm projecting $20,000 for that unless someone has some other ideas. You can see that two years ago, it was $15,351, and as of just the first of the month, it was $32,061. So, I kind of split the difference there. And don't forget, we're gonna have a mid-year review, hopefully.
Yeah, so, I don't think 20 is a legitimate number. I was speaking with Doug a little bit about...
The chair recognizes Mr. Roder from the Parks Commission.
Okay, just the...where's the button? Okay. All right, so, essentially, as I understand conversing with Doug, who actually takes in the money and then delivers it to the window or whoever collects it here, there's no real... there's a fluidity that he doesn't understand. It's where things go and how that's delegated as it comes in. And from what I asked him, I didn't come up with more than 12. You got 20 there, but I'm not sure that's a good number, is what I'm saying.
We get eight from the school.
Do we?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, see, no, that's something I didn't...you know, I ask and ask, and nobody gives me a number.
Yeah, we got eight, eight from the school and four from the Little Lake. That's 12.
Well, soccer is another four.
Okay, so that's 16.
Okay, and then there's...
And then you have...
Then there's a one-time tournament that Mr. Lang has put together, and that's anticipated to be five.
Okay, so that's 21.
Then there's $1,000 that the raceboats give us. That's a foul for rent of Devo Beach.
22, thank you.
And I can't give you...I think there's another one, but, um, yeah. And the number I didn't have was one from the school. Nobody could give me that.
Well, when you rent the rink and you rent...
Yeah, no, I get that. I understand all that.
So, how do you estimate that?
You know what? I think from adding the eight, which I just heard, to what I had already, that's probably pretty close to that.
So, 22?
I'd say 20. Leave it at 20.
Okay.
Because we don't know. And if the school had, let's say there was a postseason tournament, you know, it would be a little more. I don't know. I don't know what the rent...I think we need to revisit and set terms somehow in writing with the school as to what it's...I don't think there's anything...nobody has anything.
I agree.
So, we've got to lay this out so that if something happens to Greg Roder, it's in paper, and it's there, and somebody can look at it and say, "Okay, this is what we did last year or years before," and incorporate that. That's what we're trying to do, is reinvent the wheel here. And the wheel's been running, and the hamsters are going around, you know, but nobody... And we get our budget without any idea of what income was coming in, so... And there may be other sources. I know that we sometimes run out Marina Park, $100 bucks for a day, I guess. I don't know. But, the shelter part, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, Greg, that it's just all over the place.
Well, it's probably...20 is probably a legitimate conservative number.
Okay.
Okay, based on 20 is probably a legitimate conservative number.
Very conservative, okay.
So, yeah.
Because just what you said, I got 22.
Right, well, just leave it at...I would leave it at 20.
Okay.
Like I say, a legitimate...
In case something happens?
Yes, legitimate conservative number, so...
Right. And I'd like to hear your views on Cooperation Park.
People have...you want that right now?
Yes. Because it's fetch revenue.
Well, since I've been here, I hear people talk about it as a cooperative between, and they give these three entities, the school, the parks, and the township. I'm going, "Well, okay, show me the cooperation and show me how this thing gets done." So, I'm not...we just need structure, okay? And it's hard to do...Doug is busy all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Where we keep loading stuff on him, and that's not a legitimate use of Doug either, you know?
It's not fair.
So, I think it comes right down to it, the board has to be a little more active, and he's...and who brought it up last time? We were...it was either at our board meeting or here, where the concept of somebody actually administering the use of Cooperation Park, paper rentals, it all goes, you know, puts in a box or something that we can look at. And I think that's somebody that runs that, has an idea how things work out there. That's kind of what we're looking at.
Have you scheduled your next meeting?
We did. We can't...of course, Al just had his...Dave's just had his hip done or some other, you know, some other joint. And the thought was that we really shouldn't set a day of the month, every month, until we have everybody's input.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm there.
I mean, we want...no, you know, I think it's the 18th or something like that, 20th, maybe.
Because there's something on the books for next week at 2:00, and I asked about that, because it's not on the web.
I had called...
You can't...
Actually, I emailed Bo, and I asked him as our chair to try to schedule a special meeting. I don't know if that was what he did, was that 2:00 or...
No, no, that was the old time. He said that that wasn't gonna work.
Right, okay. I was just looking to have him schedule something so we can...we could have a meeting so we could address the wall issue down at the Devo Beach. I'd like to have that jumped on as fast as we can.
Since you brought up Doug...
He's not here. Let's elect him to something.
No, since you brought up Doug, I mean, he did a great job on the beach. He's trying his hardest. They only had two people for the longest time and still got it all done. He's just got a little bit work at the cemetery to do. But Jay and my deputy supervisor decided to help him out. Why don't you tell him what you arranged?
What did I arrange? I'm not sure.
No, to help out Doug.
Well, we need to pick up some reeds that's out at the cemetery, so we can get that done. But also, they're missing a pump out there. It's, you know, a torpedo pump of some sort.
Somebody stole it last year.
Oh, gee.
And commitments were made to replace the pump.
Was there a report?
But not necessarily passed along, so we're gonna work with Doug. He knows what needs to get ordered, but we need to make it something that he doesn't have to do the work on, and it requires plumbing. It requires obviously setting it up, electricity. It requires fittings. All the things were pretty much taken with the pump.
Capital expenditure, what you're saying.
Well, it would be maintenance and services.
Yeah.
Under the parks.
No, it will not be under parks.
It'll be under cemetery.
I'm sorry.
It'll be under cemetery or my building and grounds funding line.
Okay.
Or streets and highways. And speaking of that...
We'll figure out a way to place it where it can get paid. If we have to make a budget adjustment, we will.
Okay.
And if...we just need to make sure Doug helps to guide or get the vendor engaged in terms of how we're gonna, you know, order the pump and get it installed.
When is this pump?
It's the pump, the what? People fill up their water cans to water their flowers at the cemetery.
It's about an eight-foot by eight-foot, I don't know, hole in the ground, you know, with reinforcement along the sides, so it's obviously reinforced.
Okay.
With a big, heavy top on top of it. But someone's got to get down in there with a ladder, someone's got to make sure all the electricity is flowing properly, and then make sure there's water wherever this pump is gonna be actually.
So, he's gonna call M and M.
Yeah.
We're gonna contract it all out. I'm gonna cover that with my cost center. Another thing we did, because of the potholes out at Cooperation Park...
The driveway.
The driveway, I got them 20 yards that'll be delivered tomorrow of gravel. So, what we're trying to do is, Doug, tell us what you want. We'll get the bids. We'll order it for you. We'll save you the time. You do what you do best, maintenance.
Okay.
And I spoke to him this morning on that same topic, called him to get his input on the gravel, who to bid it from. Afterwards, we had a meeting at County Roads, and it turns out that County Roads is the best deal anyway.
That was my thing.
But the conversation with Doug...
They could probably drive it in, you know?
They will...oh, they're gonna. They're gonna install it and tamp it down and all this stuff for us.
Yeah.
But the conversation with Doug was, "Doug, we're not trying to take stuff away from you, but we're trying to take stuff away from you so you can do what you need to do."
Right.
And his response was, "I'm good with all of it." So, it sounds like he's completely on board.
He's not a resource manager. He's not a contracting officer.
Right.
You know, he just, you know...
But, okay, but it's the scheme of things. How do things get done, okay? And allocation between parks, between your budget that you've got for certain things, cemetery, we gotta sit down and figure out how this thing gets done.
Exactly.
And there's confusion on my part, and I'll bet you if you ask anybody on that board that I've sit on, they're all gonna go, "I don't know."
Well, at our last meeting, at our last parks meeting, you know, we knew that we had to set $45,000 aside...
Right.
For those pickleball courts, okay?
Tennis courts that are converted to pickleball.
Yes, sir, you're correct. For those who still play tennis. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want potholes in a road. I don't want potholes at Lower Marina Park if I have the money at another cost center to help out.
Sure.
So, that's what we're trying to do before the end of the fiscal year, and to take a load off of Doug. Because I've been watching him, and he's hustling.
He works hard.
I know.
He works hard.
And I feel bad about that, because as we've discussed, he's doing things just because he's a good guy and doesn't have to do them.
And having nothing to do with his job discretion or the position and his...
Right, we need to take some load off. So, if I miss a parks meeting, which I hope I don't, and there's something you need and you don't have the money, please ask.
Right.
Maybe we can find it somewhere else.
Okay, and my other...I guess the issue that we kind of kicked around at the parks meeting was, and we need some clarification on that, maybe in writing would be good, is how do we access the money that's allocated for Devo Beach and pay for that wall in park? You know, I don't know if that's gonna take all of that or part of that or what, but there should be some...I think the parks has to make some action, a resolution or a motion...
Sure.
That says, "This is what we'd like, you know, like you to do, Doug, okay? If you can do it, if you can't do it, we need to make this up from bidding it out." So, one or the other, that's all.
We need to bid it out.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, if we bid it out, when's it gonna get done, though? September? You see what I'm saying?
Doug's overwhelmed.
Oh, yeah.
He agrees that he would like to have it bid out.
Well, he talked to you.
Yeah.
See, when we were talking, it was like, "I can do that." So, I...
Can't do everything.
He can't do everything.
Right, oh, no, I get it, I get it.
And we got him to admit that we can help him.
Okay.
So, when Jay told me about that conversation, I immediately called North Star Stone.
Okay.
And over the weekend, I talked to Mr. Jakeway, because he's, you know, certified landscape architect. And he says, "Bob, you know, don't be doing walls or bricks until you find out what the real problem is." And sure enough, when I called all the right people, plus what Doug had already learned, that wall's gotta go up. That's the number one. So, North Star Stone, at this very moment, is...there was an estimate on the cost of the stone last year to extend the wall. He's gonna update that, get with his rep, make sure that material's still available.
Okay.
It's gonna be anywhere from $22,000 to $2,800. The cost is getting it installed, which I'm working on next, right? And if we can't find the money, you can go to Jay, as I understand it, and take it from the $16,000 Veterans Park Fund.
Yeah, so, but now we've got like two things going on here. We've got you doing it, then the Parks Commission's supposed to be doing something here, and I don't know what our function is, I guess.
I'm just doing what Doug asked me to do, and then when I get all the information, I'm gonna give it right back to you.
Okay. And again, I asked Bo to schedule a special meeting so we can address this at the Parks Commission, so we can make a decision...
Right.
And move on, you know, one or the other, and just, you know, this is kind of changing as it goes, and that's all fine, as long as the job gets done, you know?
Right, it's just information for you.
And ideally, I'm looking at, boy, would that be nice before the fourth, but I don't know.
I mean, all four, all the Parks Commissioners have a job, a full-time job, so, you know, if there's...
Yeah, that's all. Well, except for Al, he's laid up, so...
Yeah, so...
And you. What do you get all?
So, if we can get the information...
I get tired. If we can get the information for you to help you make a decision...
Oh, yeah, and that's fine.
That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, all right, I get it.
And...
But, okay, but my question goes back to accessibility and how do we utilize that money that's set aside? Do we just, you know, say, "Here's our resolution," or "Here's our motion," but we need caps on it, or we need, you know, we need some structure, you know?
It's...I'm not sure how we're gonna access it, obviously.
Okay.
It's supposed to be accessible.
Right.
So, we need to work through that. But we need you to work on, you know, this serious agreement we have here.
Okay.
Not a disagreement. And get us the, you know, the decisions by the Parks Commission.
Okay.
And we can supply requirements, we can supply information, data, whatever, that would help with that process.
That's fantastic, I think. But like I say, cooperation means cooperation. Yeah.
Jan and I will figure out how we have to access that money.
Okay, all right.
So, by your next meeting, my goal, personal goal...
I want to do a special meeting, just for that particular purpose. That's all we have.
So, my goal is to present you with three quotes...
Yep.
For people that will...
Okay.
Build the wall for Doug.
The Berlin Wall for Doug. We're good.
Now, remember, if we go local, and it's under $5,000, we don't need three quotes.
Right.
So, I'm just going to North Star Stone, because they're the ones that provided it last time.
Okay.
And it's gonna save us a lot of time.
All right. Okay. Stuff for me, anything else for me?
No, sir.
All right.
Unless you got anything else?
Yeah. We'll talk about it.
But just to summarize, we talked about the pump.
Right.
That's one project. We talked about the wall.
Yep.
That's the second project. And was there any other project that we talked about?
Oh, yeah, the Cooperation Park driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Lower Marina Park parking.
Holes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'm getting the quotes for that.
Okay.
And I'll present that to you.
Okay. Would the Road Commission help us with that as well?
Road Commission doesn't do...
Private.
They don't do private or...
Well, it's not really private.
They don't. So, that is...I'm working through that with Bridge Ward.
Well, we'll have to ask them about that Marina Park.
I did.
Did you ask them already? Because they're doing the Cooperation Park driveway.
Well, for example, they won't do the recycle center.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
And that's our property. So, I'm getting the bids so far. You can have a really nice parking lot. I got one bid for four grand.
Yeah.
And that's a lot of...that's 60 cubic yards of six dump trucks.
So, they're gonna spread it and roll it.
Spread it, roll it, pack it down, make it nice.
That's Road Mix, right?
Yeah, 23A.
That's the same thing, I think, that's on the rail trail.
Right, so we...
That's what, you want to aggregate that's gonna firm up?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, one more tag, four projects, the pump at the cemetery, the wall at the beach, Devo Beach, Koa Park Drive, roadway into the park, and Marina Park, call it a storage area, parking area, whatever.
Parking, yeah, overflow parking or whatever you wanna call it, yeah.
And then another thing I'm trying to do, but I don't think I'll be able to make it by your meeting date...
Well, why not?
I have two of the older bricks that I've shared with North Star Stone.
Okay.
And he thinks that for an additional 55 cents to a dollar, we can get a far better brick made out of a special top aggregate.
Is it density, is that what the issue is, really, on the brick density? If it's more dense, there's gonna be less wear on it.
Right.
Is that really what it is, is its density?
Right. So, he's using...
Hard as a scissors.
He's using a special brick where at the top of the brick, they're all concrete, they're not really brick.
Right.
They have about a half inch of some special material on top of there that's hard as a rock...
Okay.
Before they engrave it.
Yep.
And he's using them at Mackinac Island. So, he's gonna get me one so I can bring it to you.
Okay, great.
And then he sealed the brick afterwards, which will help, too, so...
And, but we'd have to seal every two years, according to him. So, that's a decision you guys will have to make.
It's worth it if you're not replacing bricks all the time, you know?
Yeah.
So, depends on the cost, but, yeah.
Yeah, and it's kind of weird, because we were down...I was down there taking pictures.
Yeah.
And there's some bricks totally destroyed, and then there's other bricks that are just as old, like my dad's brick, which is a little worn, but not bad.
Well, I think they're different material. I looked at the colors, and I was down there right after the meeting, I thought, you know, something doesn't...it's not consistent. So, if someone produces a brick and the same company produces another brick 10 years later, it may be a different product, that's all.
Yeah, I think Todd would even be willing to come talk to you at his meeting.
Okay.
So, when I get the meeting, I'll tie him from Bo. I'll ask him to attend, is that okay?
Sure, that'd be nice.
Okay.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Do it. All right.
Okay, so, we were on...all right, let me make that change. Okay, so, land sales. We have two interested buyers already for some of the lots on Commerce Park. We're talking, you know, we're netting...I can just turn it on. We're netting anywhere between, what was it, $175,000 and $250,000? So, I think that on land sales, we could estimate at least selling one lot at $25,000. That's really, really, really conservative. I just, I didn't want to hand that...I can leave it blank, or I can add the $25,000. It's up to the board.
Well, you got $5,000 on there now on land sales.
I think that's based on selling back behind us, maybe?
Right.
So, you had another $20,000 lot, you get 25?
Yep, I think that would be a fair estimate.
Are you okay with that?
Uh, yeah.
Jan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then, income. What do you want to do about that treasurer? Right now, it's zero.
You talking about interest income?
Yeah. Because you're the investment officer.
You're up.
You have any thoughts for next fiscal year or leave it blank?
I have a tendency to do very conservative on revenue, so if we could make that 10, I think that's doable.
Okay.
$10,000?
Yeah.
So, that would be five...yeah, so $200,000 at 5%. Yeah, that's real conservative, okay.
I like the way this is going up, up, up.
And our low point, right now, we have 820 in the general fund, but there's some issues I'm gonna talk about when we get to Sewers. And our low points that I've been able to ascertain is 620, and I know you're running some other numbers, because that's probably not accurate. So, maybe by mid-year review, we'll have better handle on it, right? Better handle on it, right?
Uh, by mid-year review, I'd like to have a nice cash flow that I can, uh, spreadsheet that I can share with everyone.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the line under dividends is blank, but yet we are showing thirty-eight hundred dollars. What is that? It's.
That's airport hangar lease.
Okay, that didn't come up, so, thank you.
Thirty-eight hundred, I'm showing us airport hangar lease.
Yeah, that's correct.
Mine was just blank on the explanation as well, so I just wanna read that. Thank you.
So, so I, I have a question. What are the services rendered? In one oh one triple zero six thirty, charges for services airport at twelve hundred?
That is where, uh, our airport volunteers, uh, charge utility company to plow their road and they pay us.
Okay.
Is that P I N G or something?
Yeah. In line five and those guys.
Okay.
And then, um, contribution from private sources is, um, actually kinda low. But, that's okay, that's, you know, for the fireworks and other things that we get donations for. This year, we're up to what, nine thousand? Already?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have some great fireworks. Okay, Jay, uh, re- reimbursements, does anything go there?
Not that I'm aware of.
So how do we get reimbursed for? The audit and some of our services?
That goes under expenditures, that's just a matter of redistributing.
Oh, okay, so leave that blank?
I'm not sure in the revenue source what that seventy twenty-two was back in, uh, you know, this year. This has been blank for other years.
Is, is that not our workers' comp rebate?
No, that was in, that was under expenditures and under fees and penalties.
The, the, the money that.
Oh, yes, it should be. I think you're right, that's right.
Oh, yeah, okay, now I understand.
But that was a rebate to this year, and it won't be, you know, we're not expecting a rebate for the next year.
Okay, so, and then under refunds and rebates, what was that? Sixty-six twenty, I, I have no idea. Refunds and rebates. I mean, I'm, I'm just leaving it zero because, uh, Mike and Sue left it at zero and they're, you know, I'm sure they had a reason for doing that.
You talking about six eighty-seven?
Uh, it's.
Six eight seven, yeah.
Yeah, six eight seven, it says sixty-six hundred and twenty bucks we got this year.
Well, and, and what I would say about that is the stuff that's, the way that the state sets up the uniform chart of accounts. Once you get past six, uh, seventy, and you're in six seventy-five through six ninety-nine. Those things tend to be, um. Unusual items, so I wouldn't budget for any of them.
Okay.
Unless you had something in the works at the end of the year that you knew was gonna happen.
Okay, I have a question. Let's say the blatant elimination grant, we have to pay for it first, and then we get reimbursed, would that go under that or would that be separate because it's a grant coordinated thing?
It depends on the grant.
Okay.
In this budget.
I'll have to talk to you about that.
Because I didn't know, I didn't add it as revenue, and I didn't add it as an expense.
Well, it's, it's an in and out, though.
It's, it's an offset.
Right.
It should be reflected in the budget, right, Jan, or should it not?
It, it depends, how you put it in the budget really depends on, on what the grant says about the accounting for the grant. But if it's, if it's gonna be net zero, uh, no impact, and by that I mean no impact on, um, net income or net deficit. Then I would just, I, I wouldn't worry about spending a lot of time on it.
Okay, so the new total is eight twenty-eight, five seventy? Where did I get an oh nine? Oh, that's the one mil. Okay, eight twenty-eight, comma, five seventy, oh nine. Okay, so, now my, before we leave revenue. My question for the clerk and the treasurer is, this budget's the old chart of accounts. Can I, when we're all done, I, I gotta post this right away, so people can review it in time for the public hearing. Can we convert it later? Where you give me the chart of account, new chart of accounts, and I can move it over? Is that what I should do, Jan?
I, I, I think we're gonna have to provide a map for everyone.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna have to go through it, but, but the current, all the current accounts for this twenty-two, twenty-three year have the new general ledger, the numbers in it.
Right, but, this budget does not.
Well, because it, it may have been pulled.
It was done before then.
Before then.
Okay, so, we'll be able to convert it over, right?
We'll be able to convert it over, so it's, it's not gonna be a problem.
Uh, not that different, okay. Alright, any other questions on revenue?
Oh, we went up a hundred thousand, that's okay.
Yeah. So, township board trustee salaries, eighty-four eighty, that's statutory. Admin assistant, I took, uh. Thirty hours a week times twenty-four dollars is thirty-three, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Office assistant, twenty hours a week at eighteen dollars an hour, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And then I took the formula, tell me if I did it right. Uh, office assistant was age forty-nine times point zero seven seven five.
Six five.
Seven six five percent.
Oh, why did I think six? What's the matter with me?
You're, you're okay.
It, it's not gonna be material.
Yeah, true.
You were conservative, so.
So, so that's six forty-eight. Okay, then we have the admins FICA, let me change that to six five.
All those Ficas can go together into one FICA account.
Okay, but, but we can do that when we return the chart, right?
Exactly, because they're all coming out of one account, so that's.
Okay, alright, and then the office assistant FICA, the same thing. Now, let's see, how much does it change it actually? A few pennies. Okay, so, then we had, uh. Office supplies, no change. Uh, township professional expenses, I think, is that? Was that something that was too low? No, that's under your line.
No, I think that's, it's right in line with all the other, other numbers right now.
Right, so, uh. The year before, it was twenty-four seventy-six. So far, we've spent thirty-one oh three. So I le- I, I, I left, uh, uh, Mike and Sue's original estimate of thirty-five hundred. As I did the GS assessment to sewer, as I did to the fees, communications. Uh, mail and postage. Uh, internet and website. Are, are, are you all good with that?
That's about right.
Where are you at?
Postage may have to go.
Oh, communications is spectrum.
Yeah.
And internet and website is, uh.
V C three?
Uh, no, that's emails.
Emails.
Right, so. Uh, where is that? Okay. My only reimbursement, I left what they said, zero. Uh, fireworks, uh, community promotions, I jumped up to twenty thousand, five hundred, because that's what we're actually spending. Actually, we're spending now twenty-two five.
Twenty-two, twenty-two for the.
Fireworks and fire for the DJ.
Five hundred for the DJ, and then I have the expenses of the plywood and stuff to protect.
But that's one time, correct?
That's gonna be a one-time expense, because if we buy the half-inch real plywood, not the composite stuff, it'll last longer. And since we're redoing the little cemetery building, we can use that for the storage, and then we don't have to buy the plywood every year, we can just keep reusing it.
Okay.
We went down to the pier, um, was it yesterday? I'm losing days here. And, um, we kinda measured out and we think about twelve or thirteen sheets should do it fine, so.
So. Uh, the next line is township printing and publishing.
That includes your newsletter, synapses, sewer publications, and papers, all those kinds of things.
Yeah, so before, it was twenty-two hundred, before that, it was a thousand. I know the newsletter's gonna be around with postage, twelve hundred bucks, the rest is coming out of the treasurer's account. So how much do we need on that line?
Well, the publishing for, like, all of our synapses minutes and our, um, public hearing.
Oh, it went up.
Things like that is huge now that we're going through Sheboygan truck, it's huge.
Okay, so you need that at?
I don't know, we need twelve thousand, five hundred, that seems a little high. Unless there's something there, I don't understand.
You wanna do seventy-five hundred and look at mid-year?
That's what I would.
Or ten thousand?
I don't think we need ten thousand.
I would go seventy-five hundred and then, um.
Jan?
I don't really have a basis to compare, so I think Jay's got a better handle on that than I do.
Five hundred it is. Uh, membership dues, I, I left that, uh, on Mike's. Uh, township board education and training, I think we need that. We're talking about some cemetery training.
There was also some Nem, uh, I'm not sure if I say this right, Nemcog expenses buried in there a little bit as well. For, I think, don't you have a professional dues for, for Nemcog that you pay every year?
No. The county pays for it.
There was some, some expense in there related to that.
Well, that goes under planning commission or our training.
Could be, but.
So.
There was some in there, not, not a lot.
In the past, it's all been buried into the, you know, her expenses for the master plan and, uh, the training that we put in the budget, so.
Okay.
There was never an individual charge that I can remember.
It doesn't, it, it wasn't related to the master plan, but it was related to Nemcog, and I just, I can't remember all the details.
We have not used Nemcog other than the master plan in the past. Hopefully, we'd be able to get more engaged with some other things down the road, but. That's a different subject, so.
They're gonna, uh, really help us on the parks. They're gonna get the Sparks grant done in time. As soon as I can. Get the drawing. But that would be under parks. So here's my question board. Under supervisor, there's education and training, under township board, and education and training. And I wanna take Mr. Chaverny's advice and capture the seven thousand dollars that we're gonna need for M E D C. So should it go under my training and funding line, or should it go under township board?
I think it should go under your training.
Okay, alright, so remind me when we get there.
Okay, on this township board education and training, I think we need to bump it up to about a thousand. Because we're gonna have, uh, we've got two new board members.
Okay.
Um, and I'm sure whoever we pick for the trustee, the interim trustee, they're going to need some training to figure out how.
Okay.
We work, and.
Yeah, plus, plus we have to pay for that online stuff too, right?
Yeah.
They charge for that.
Yeah, yeah, or they can go in person, there's a lot of in-person ones too, like in Gaylord, they, they, uh, run a lot of the.
And that's always better.
It is, it is always better to be able to communicate in person with and coordinate.
Is there any objections to the public?
I think we should put a, a thousand, and then we can revisit it halfway through.
Yeah, and, uh, I reduce the township.
Sorry, Bob, is your M T A membership fee, does that go somewhere else?
Uh, that goes somewhere else.
Cause that's.
Yeah, that, that's, that's up at, uh, one oh one, nine one five. Also, this township board repairs and maintenance, I mean, we have a building maintenance fund. So I took an average of the thirteen and the eighteen, and reduced it by two hundred bucks to, to fifteen. Library and contents insurance, that's set, Jay gave me that.
But the, the township board repairs and maintenance is one of the areas I think we share, between the library, between the police. And that represents the shared cost, so.
It's not under building and grounds? I think it's under building and grounds.
Maybe it was nine thirty, that's.
Pretty sure that was under building and grounds. But if it's not, we can come back.
Right.
Okay, so a thousand dollars for training. Township board rentals, I have no idea what that is. What are we renting?
Used to be Gordy's Barn over here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
But that is now sold, so.
Right.
You're no longer renting it.
We aren't?
That's true.
So what, what do you do with all your stuff now? Your snowmobile?
I haul it all home and I store it myself.
Hey, hey, chief. At the end of August, that cemetery building is gonna be all redone. And they don't store remains there during the winter anymore. It's gonna be totally.
Open.
It, it will not be heated, but it, it's, it's gonna be high and dry with a brand-new roof on it. So, you know, you don't wanna use your home stuff. So, hopefully that'll.
Might help you a little. I mean, it's not a huge building, but there's.
Oh, there's, there's some space, you can get the snowmobile in there. It's got, you know, those double doors? So you, you could get your snowmobile in there. Oh, but you got that.
Yeah, I just take the trailer home and store the snowmobile right in the trailer.
Okay, well, I guess we could measure and see where we are. What about, what about the red barn?
Red barn, Parks and Rec usually.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. I talked to, I talked to Doug about that, he said, I got that jam packed, so. But just letting you know, we have extra storage.
A lot of that stuff went to the red barn.
So, just letting you know, we've got extra storage gonna be available for this fall on there, so.
Do we need another storage?
What's that?
Do you need your own storage building?
We talked about. Over there where the old subject tank was, building a pole barn there. Someday.
About Commerce Park? Or is that too far?
I wouldn't say it's too far.
Something for you, thank you. I'm sure we can get Mr. Chauvet to get us a deal.
We have that property that's right across the street from Navanoy by the boat launch. That's forty foot by, how much, a hundred?
Yeah, I, I talked to Walt Ellis about that property. And because it's only forty feet wide, you can't use it for boat parking, because you couldn't, you know, turn around. But it's township property.
Something to think about as an option, cause, you know, we're considering maybe selling it, but if there's a use for it. We already have it, nice pole barn could go right up there.
Twenty-four by thirty.
Right across, yeah, right across the street, uh, Navanoy from the boat launch there, right across the street. Next to where that fifth wheel is.
Yep.
Right there.
Okay.
How much do you have?
I just need a place like. If I could store a vehicle, a trailer, with the snowmobile in the trailer, that'd be perfect.
Oh, so that would be a, what, a thirty by forty, twenty by forty?
Yeah, I should put them in there back to back, you know.
Do the back of right in and stack them up.
Don't we have to have, Mike, ten feet setbacks on each side? So the building can only, it's forty-three foot long, so we, we can only do twenty feet.
Right.
Would that be enough? Well, you better put it in a capital expenditure project at the next C I P.
See, we're all thinking here, we have, here you go.
Well, if we can use the land, I certainly don't wanna sell it. Okay, so we're moving right along liability set, workman comp. That workman comp's kinda low, are we okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I double-checked it.
Now.
Yeah, we, we basically, um, police chief gets most of the workman's cap, uh, expenses.
You're welcome.
Uh, township board rentals goes to zero then, correct?
Yes, that's what I heard.
Okay, computer services. I will have a better handle on that on Thursday. Uh, when I get a couple of bidders in here that you authorize me to get. But for now, we can leave it at forty-five hundred. I will tell you, if we stay with B C I, that's gonna go way up.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it'll go up a couple of thousand minimum, maybe twenty-five hundred more.
Also, twenty-three hundred dollars in there for B S N A.
Yeah.
So we, we paid roughly for B S N A overall, at least thirty-eight hundred. I mean, there's other accounts that we paid into.
Oh, so this is strictly B S N A?
No, it's B S N A plus V C three.
That's low, I'm gonna have to take a look at that.
What about our cemetery stuff, is, or is that in that cemetery?
That's under cemetery.
Okay, on that cost center, okay.
Okay, and then, um, down to computer and office equipment. Five thousand, is that what we want, or is it too high, too low?
Well, do you want a new server?
Uh, that, that's a capital project.
Okay.
It'd be under the C I P, if we need it, uh, we'll, we'll see what these guys tell us whether we need it or not.
I think twenty-five hundred's probably okay.
Yeah, cause we did invest in some computers this last year. So.
The only thing I need is one new monitor, that thing's about dead, but that'll be under my line, okay, so.
Twenty-five hundred, just to have a safety net there. Or we could go down to zero, and we could reinvest it if necessary.
Zero, but.
I don't think that's smart.
Are cameras in there anywhere?
That's capital project. The security system, cameras, all of that. Plus, we gotta talk with the library and.
Yeah.
And the police department.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're both on.
Oh, chief, I'm sorry, since we're talking about computers, uh, the gentleman will be here Thursday at one. Are, are you available?
I'll make myself available.
Okay. Yeah, my office.
So where are we putting, um, the computer and office equipment down to?
Uh, twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Okay, so that takes us to one thirty-three, comma, eight twenty-eight dot zero two. Supervisor salary is set. Deputy, I put in five thousand, seems awful low for somebody working thirty to forty hours a week, but. At least it pays for the mileage.
It's live right around the block.
Well, no, I'm talking about driving to all these meetings and. Going out and surveying some of these roads. That was an interesting meeting.
Stomping around front, yeah.
Yeah, oh boy. Uh, so I added up those two figures times point oh seven, six five, not seven five. That's, uh, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. And then I added eight thousand dollars for M E D C, was it, I thought it was eight. I think we oughta leave it at eight.
That's the R R C stuff?
Oh, so, I thought it was seven.
It was seven.
I don't know, it was in the budget last year, so I'm.
Yeah, well.
You can raise it to eight, but that's what.
I think, I really think we're gonna need it, Mike.
Okay.
What do you think?
I'm, I'd go with you.
We can always.
We got that from Denise last year, it was like twelve thousand dollars altogether. Supposedly, when she got Mike up to speed, you know, it's, I guess, what was seven. But again, that's an estimate, so I would put in a higher amount if I were you.
Okay.
I would put eight.
Is eight enough?
Uh, I would think so, I would hope so, I mean.
Well, we can, we can always adjust it in the year.
I mean, if the returns outweigh the cost, do you wanna make?
Well, yeah, that's basically what I keep hearing and what I keep seeing, and like I said, with Denise, uh, with her ability to. Her expertise to write grants and stuff, and there's a lot of opportunity out there, so. and there's a lot of opportunity out there, so.
Oh, boy.
I would go with eight right now, and like you said, by midterm, we should know by middle of the year, 'cause hopefully our master plan will be done by the end of the summer, you know, then we can go from there where she wants us to be as far as getting training and, you know, writing grants and stuff, certain things we need.
These grants are killing us. We got six people working on grants. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
And, I mean.
Yeah, our new office admin just is writing a grant for some fire equipment grant. Hopefully we get that taken.
Well, you know, the competition we have with grants now is shaboying, 'cause they're already certified with the IRC.
Finally.
And so we need to get ourselves up to speed with them, so we can use some of.
We'll catch up.
Let's see this walk before we run.
I know, yeah. No, we'll catch up, we'll catch up.
It's a good opportunity here.
All right, I'll leave it at eight then, if that's okay with you.
I would go with eight, then.
Okay.
I guess it was partially funded this year, I guess.
Um, I did neglect to put office supply, so I want, but I wanted to ask Jay. I didn't think I needed office supplies, but I think, isn't those, I have laser jets. Aren't those kind of expensive?
Yes. Toners.
The toners.
I think you need something in there.
Yeah, I do, but aren't those old as dirt?
Which ones for the printers?
Yeah.
Laser is the way to go, because you get a lot more, more printing for your bog.
Not anymore.
It's better than ink jets.
No, the new Epson printers have giant tanks. It'll run a year for forty-nine dollars.
Well, and that's why we kept money in there for computers and services, because someone decided they need a new printer or.
I mean, my suggestion is that these laser jets are extremely expensive to replace. And you can get a four hundred dollar Epson with these giant ink wells that last forever. When we were doing sewer petitions, it was just churning, churning, churning. "Bob, don't you need any more money for ink?" No, it's just churning.
Where do you wanna put it in?
Uh, I don't know. Because I don't know how much this stuff costs.
Well, then let's just keep it the way it is, and then we'll evaluate as we go along.
Is it about five hundred in here?
Five hundred, yeah, I think that's good.
Just, just in case.
And then equipment, five hundred in case a printer burns out or a scanner gets dropped or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, but we're zero-based, I don't, I don't think it's going anyway. I got two printers, and if one goes out, I still only need one printer. So I can bite the bullet, I don't need the.
You don't need the equipment then?
No. I really don't. Because everything else we need is pretty much, well, batteries for these microphones aren't, that would be office supplies, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Contingencies.
So what did we agree to there?
Five hundred.
Five hundred for?
Office supplies, equipment, zero.
Okay, got it.
Eight thousand, education, training. So contingencies. Jan, I'm gonna let you address contingencies, because just to give you a hint where we are right now, we are balanced. We have a balanced budget as of, if we make no further changes, we are one percent under revenue, projected revenue. And that's with twenty-five thousand.
In contingency.
Right, but if we're, I know before we had a fifty thousand dollar contingency budget. Then we cut it to twenty-five. Well, we did that, as I recall, because we were twenty-four, the budget was twenty-four percent over revenue expenditures. But if we're gonna have a real tight budget, and we're gonna really twist our arms to keep spending at the absolute minimum, if something happens, like the well goes, right, and Parks doesn't have the money, or there's a fire, well, that might be too extreme, we got insurance.
That would definitely be extreme. I would, I'm tracking with you, I would say that if you're, if you're gonna be tight everywhere else, you've gotta leave yourself some room for contingencies more than twenty-five thousand dollars, so that you don't have to.
Back to fifty.
Yeah, and as long as we all understand that that, that number's there, it's not a secret, it's there to cover us in case of the vagaries of what happens day-to-day, and that we're gonna manage it.
Right, and with inflation the way it is, supply chains the way it is, you might have to buy something a little bit more expensive just to get it, you never know. I think, I think that's wise, because we don't know what tomorrow's bringing. It's been kinda crazy this last year and a half, so I think we need to.
Could I split the difference with you and try thirty-five?
Sure.
Until mid-year review?
And, you know, a year from now, we'll have a lot better data on what really needs to be there.
Okay, so here's where we get into the fund, 'cause some of this is way too low. Clerk salary, twenty-four, four thirty-two. Deputy, five thousand, just like before. Employee social security, let me fix that.
Should be the same as yours about.
Twenty-two, fifty-one dot fifty-five. Clerk office supplies, a thousand, is that enough, Jay?
Uh.
You're doing a lot of stuff, man.
Yeah.
Fifteen?
No, 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 a thousand's fine.
Okay. Professional.
That would be Neil's?
That's Neil's, and I'd like to leave it at the eight.
Okay.
But there's, there's other areas, I'll point out, where we've also paid for Neil's salary.
Okay.
And so as we go down through the list here, there's, I think, areas to give back some money, so.
Okay, clerk education and training for your deputy and yourself.
Yes.
Leave that?
Yeah.
Okay, and clerk software, is that enough?
That would be BSNA as well?
It's, well, there's.
Probably the payroll module and some other.
Actually, part of Neil's expenses showed up in that account as well.
Okay.
So we should leave it?
I'm gonna leave, well, but I'm leaving, I think that, my notes, I wrote down, we could, we could move thirteen to two thousand, send it over to nine thirty-three, which is, when we get there. I'd like to come back to this.
Okay. Make a note.
We could move, we could move it to another account under the treasurer, who's gonna need it more than I do.
Okay. Accounting fees.
Accounting fees, what, are you showing fourteen thousand?
Yeah, because this last time it was twelve thousand, eight hundred is what.
So I just, well, we're in the process of reallocating, redistributing those fees.
Okay.
So at the very, I would say that at the very high end, we would be three thousand. So if you put three thousand in there for the township, or for the township's portion of those fees.
Oh, I see. Where before, that twelve-eight captured everybody, is what.
Well, it goes in there initially.
Okay.
And then we're redistributing, and so four thousand went to the DDA, and then we redistributed the rest between the police, us, library, sewers, and anybody else I forgot. Oh, the DDA got a piece of it as well, so, so three thousand's good.
Okay.
It gives you eleven thousand there, which offsets your thirty-five thousand.
Okay, so, all right. Treasurer, Jan.
You're skipping border review.
Border review.
Oh, that's set.
Okay.
I don't, I checked with Mike on that and with our assessor.
And there's what, four border review meetings in a year, is that correct? We typically just make one payment at the end of those four.
Right. Okay, Jan.
And I thought we had just paid border review.
We did.
Okay.
That was my point.
So I'm gonna change Jan to six point zero seven six five.
Just know that with that border review, if you have more people appealing, you know, and.
Can go up.
The more efficient Doug is with getting more reviews done, the more likely you are to get appeals in that year.
Mm-hmm.
So you, that, that line could get completely blown out, but, you know, is it realistic to beef it up based on maybe, no.
Office supplies is five hundred enough?
Where are you at?
On Jan.
I think we should revisit the deputy treasurer wages, have we talked about that?
You can talk about anything you want.
Are we gonna keep it at five hundred?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, mine says five hundred, so that's fine. Okay.
You got one on the screen.
And you're telling me that lowering the salary for the treasurer is a difficult proposition?
No. There's just a way to do it.
Okay.
The MTA has told me how to do it. There's just administrative steps that you have to go through.
Okay.
And, but the bottom line is, you have to shed, you have to prove that you have shed non-statutory duties.
Okay.
In order to lower your pay.
Okay.
And it can only be done voluntarily.
Okay.
But there are other rules.
Well, we'll know that I'm considering that.
Same for me as well. Same for me as well. Now, so office supplies, is five hundred enough?
Yeah. I don't really have an issue with anything that's on here.
What about this treasurer professional expense? What is that?
Well, that's what I, I'd like to move that twelve hundred down to the other line, software maintenance agreements, under nine thirty-three, along with thirteen hundred to whatever I said, two thousand from the other account. Because there's a number of things in there that Jan needs to figure out where we're at. There's a lot of special BSNA bank reconciliation software, special assessment software, taxes, BS, and then just the typical BSNA expense.
And this mail postage seems to be low, because the estimate I got from KCI would tell me that mail and postage, because you're sending out bills twice a year, right? That oughta be about thirty-five hundred dollars from what I saw.
Did they break that down in the bill?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, thirty, I think it came around thirty-two, I just multiplied it times two, and it was about thirty-two hundred. Postage went up a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, I think that's too low for you. Well, I mean, I would do thirty-five hundred, and let's see what happens.
Okay.
After winter taxes.
So are we keeping that professional expertise line the same, twelve hundred?
I think you could cut it in half and move the difference down to, down to line nine thirty-three.
Okay, so tell me what you want in two-five-three-eight-oh-one.
Um, just five, or six hundred dollars.
Is that okay, Jan?
Sure.
It's your account?
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're covering all of the, basically all of the Neil bills?
I'm covering the Neil.
Okay.
Anything that got spent back to Neil in these other accounts that I'm identifying, I'm trying to move that money over to you, so you can cover your software-related costs.
Okay.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
Treasure tax preparation, I didn't touch it because I don't understand it.
Where are you at? Give me another.
Eight oh-four. Uh, eight oh-four. Two-five-three dot eight oh-four.
I say we leave it there.
Till we figure it out.
Once we get a better handle on, we can.
It was twelve hundred one year and six forty-three another year.
Well, I say we leave it right where it's at.
Education and training, is that enough, Jan?
Yep.
You sure?
Yep.
Okay.
Mine was reimbursement, that's like.
Yeah, we don't have that anywhere. I zeroed it out everywhere.
Thank you.
Because no one's ever spent it in the last three years on anything. Uh, software maintenance agreement, how much?
Well, I think the fifteen plus the six is twenty-one.
Okay.
Plus, I would move the two that's under nine thirty-three, under clerk, right down there as well.
Okay, so give me a total.
Twenty-five, I mean, twenty-three.
How much?
Twenty-three.
So enough, Jay?
No, I think the two plus six is twenty-six, plus fifteen is forty-one, that's what I would put in there.
Oh, I trapped, I'm.
I know, I'm confused, two thousand, but I think it's forty-one. There's a reason I spent thirty-seven there, because there was, as we started to get into bank reconciliation, and a number of other things that the treasurer needs to know or do, we invited additional software to do those things. Jan's gotta get involved and decide, going forward, how much of that do we need, but.
See, this is the perfect example of zero-based budgeting only, where we have to put more resources.
Yep.
Not less.
But we're moving resources around here, too.
Right, right.
Trying to move money to other accounts.
But we're getting better at identifying the true requirement, or what we think is the true requirement.
You gotta do it more than once to get it, get it right.
And computer and office equipment, Jan?
I think we're set in there.
What about your laptop?
I already have a laptop that I'm just gonna reformat, hand over to Lavish, so that he can get it set up.
Whoa, 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 we bought a new laptop for the treasurer. Where is it?
I do not know, I have a desktop in there.
Well, we need to get it back.
I wonder if that's it, is that it?
No, there's a supervisor on it. It's a supervisor. Oh, my God, his own laptop, that was.
I specifically remember.
I remember that Bobby's computer crashed, but I don't remember.
That was her big computer.
Should get tabled.
Yeah. Let me take a look at the desktop that's in my office, see how I might need a new one.
Yeah, but what do you wanna do in the meantime? What if you need it?
The, a laptop?
Yeah. All right, we can do it mid-year.
I think I got it covered, though.
All right, we'll do it mid-year.
So we take that to zero? We're gonna do that to zero then, by that five hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're down to election?
Professor salaries.
We already did that.
Okay.
Look, let me just blow that up for you right now.
The election?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Oh, oh, I have, I'm sorry, I apologize. I might have made a mistake. Do you remember on the administrator, assessor, admin, was it fifteen or seventeen that Doug wanted? 'Cause one column says seventeen, and my notes say fifteen. Does anybody remember? Otherwise, I'll just leave it alone.
Are they seventeen, fifty an hour, plus twenty a card, that they're gonna try to figure that backwards in the hourly?
He had that all broke down.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm just gonna leave it at his seventeen.
I would do that seventeen.
And then.
Because I don't wanna hamstring him.
Well, I think, I did the math, I just can't, I don't have it with me, and I believe it was right around seventeen.
Okay.
So everything I'm gonna say about elections flies in the face of zero-based budgeting.
Okay.
But it's a passed law turned into a constitution.
Yeah, it's called No Fail.
P-A-S-S-E.
No Fail Mission.
Passed law, turned into a constitutional amendment, from what I recall, and we don't have a clue how that's going to work out in practice.
No.
So there's been discussion at the county level and at the state level about some sort of consolidation for those nine days of early voting that are now a mandate.
But I thought we were under the threshold of population.
It doesn't matter, you've still gotta do the nine days of early vote.
Even if you only have six hundred and forty-two people in Grant Township?
Uh-huh, yeah, uh-huh.
Yep.
So that, that is all up in the air. We're gonna have to wait for some direction from the Secretary of State Bureau of Elections and from the county clerk. There was discussion about trying to do some sort of consolidation.
I remember that.
So all these little bitty townships didn't have the staff, a room with a open precinct.
Well, you went to that meeting, right?
I, well, it wasn't really a meeting. But it's up in the air, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know what it's gonna, what effect it's gonna have on the election worker salary line, how much we're gonna have to spend. The only thing that crossed my mind since we last discussed this, the outside camera to monitor the drop box is a mandate and should get charged back to elections. So even though we're gonna include it in the, in the camera bid, and that's a capital project, that's got to be done by the next election, probably, what, May of twenty-four?
Well, you know.
So as of right now, I think it's May of twenty-four.
We don't, right now, we don't have any data.
Anything in twenty-three.
And then the seventeen file was based on the second precinct, are we gonna need a second precinct?
Yeah, I think so.
Our third precinct?
Second, not third.
No, just not a third.
Second is a done deal, cause we're over the population.
No, we're not.
Well, they're, I think they're, I think they're preparing for it, that's why they're thinking that we do it.
There's two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two voters in Tuscaloosa Township as of April.
Yeah, and as of when you hit three thousand, it bumps you up.
But we're not three thousand, we're twenty-eight thirty-two.
We're not, we're, I think the county clerk said we're right around three thousand, so.
She's the one that gave me the diss, so.
One hundred and sixty-eight voters.
Anyway, the point I'm making is that I don't think you can be any more accurate with this than what you are. You certainly can't cut from it. I would not object to beefing it up, but we don't.
Well, that's what I'm worried about.
We just don't know what the metric is.
Do we have to buy a machine for ten thousand dollars?
We already bought it.
Already did.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're actually gonna pilot the two machines, you know, right here in the same room.
Just have two distinct precincts.
And we need to figure out how we're gonna do that, but that would allow us to double, or double the flow through this room.
I guess my point is, whether we like it or not, we still have to try zero-based, so we're gonna have to give our best estimate building from zero. And seventeen thousand five hundred is just something we pull out of.
Right, right.
So, so what is it really?
It's double that, because if you're running a second precinct, you're running two machines. You gotta have two people, where previously you only had one.
Well, you only spent eleven thousand dollars last year.
So you would double last year's, but the point is, if you're gonna double something, I would do that seventeen five, and then you, we may have.
Because it may not affect us, it won't affect us until the second half of your next fiscal.
Again, last year, or this past year, whatever you wanna think about it, or current year, we had two elections, we had, we had two elections. Maybe it was in the previous fiscal year, we had a primary, we had a general.
Well, that's what we're gonna have?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you're gonna have in twenty-four, it's probably the same.
No, no, but that'll be in another fiscal year.
Right.
November will be in the next fiscal.
So will August.
But there's likely to be a primary.
Yes, there's likely, yep, well, and there's likely to be a millage election in May, that will be this fiscal that you're working on now.
And there's, there's still a chance that you could have a general, so.
I'm trying to think.
Is, is there anybody in the room who works the elections who'd like to weigh in, not to put you on the spot?
Yeah, I just have a question. We literally have one AV board, right, or absentee ballot?
Yes, yes. Would, would handle both precincts?
I think so, I'm not sure.
Well, these are all the things I need to get answers to.
I, I, I'm not sure of that, I'm not sure of the answer to that.
Okay, that was just something that someone said last time.
Great question.
But, pardon?
That's a great question.
Oh, I'm sorry, and.
Yeah, I don't know why you would need two, if they're, if everybody's sitting in their, their AV ballots to a single location. You just need a tabulator and people to open the ballots.
Well, now you could, I mean, some places bring their AVs out and rent them, you know, and a tabulator in the main.
If they don't have a second one, but we, we always had a second one.
We always had a second one, right.
The question is.
Would we now need three tabulators? That's the question, probably, maybe not, maybe not.
Well, we have them, right? We've already bought the second one.
We have three tabulators that are all the same.
Oh, okay, you're all, okay, covered, okay.
And we're setting up to have two precincts when we're ready for the two precincts. As my understanding, we could still do one AV board.
I understand that too, but I don't even know where I got that information, so just ignore me.
It's a great question, I've got ten others that could be answered.
There's so many variables with this, because they're changing all the laws.
And we've got, we can't have one.
No, well, by adding a second precinct, you won't, you'll cut that in half.
Yeah, but who's gonna man that?
Good question, that's why you.
That's labor.
Oh, it's gonna be double the labor, for sure. There's not, I'm just saying, well, I understood there would only, I don't know for sure, I'm sorry, Ron.
No, I don't either.
I understood that there would only have to be one AV board, but I'm not sure, lots of changes I've evolved, so.
But Vicki, aren't we gonna need two lines?
Two lines, yes.
So that doubles our labor.
Called walk-ins, which is called walk-in.
So that is twenty-two thousand?
That's, that's my point.
And you said that figure.
Yeah, so there would be two, you would need, if you had four people for the walk-in before, you'd need eight people. But what I'm saying is you don't need.
And we don't, we don't even know the effect of the nine days.
Well, yeah, I didn't even know about that, so.
Isn't, doesn't the, aren't they doing the county leveling?
Well, we, that was discussed. The question is, can you require a voter to travel outside of their district to cast a vote? And that, that sounds like a, like a court question.
Yeah, and on top of that, if we do a consolidation, if, if that's what they're going to do for like nine days.
They're still gonna want some money for it, or some staff.
They're gonna want some staffing from these individual townships to help.
Yeah, they're not gonna do it for free.
Exactly, so we're gonna have to cover that.
It's a bit, it's a big mess.
I would suggest we go twenty-two five, go back up to contingency and bump it to forty.
It's a can of worms, without a doubt.
Because we don't wanna go, uh-oh, we're short.
Well, I, I would leave this alone, I think, cause we don't even know how many elections we're gonna have, and if you wanna bump up contingencies a bit to cover.
Without any major change, you're only talking one election in this fiscal, and it should be May of twenty-four.
But, but they're thinking about changing the primaries earlier because the Democrats want.
They wanna compete with New Hampshire.
Yes.
Iowa caucus.
Iowa.
Yes, they want it, so that would maybe change the whole dynamics there, but I know the Democrat Party is talking about moving it up.
So Jan, what you're saying is leave it alone, but add five grand to contingency.
Yeah.
That's what I would do. We don't have to have a caucus, your fronts, right now, a lot of recruitment. Start talking to your fronts.
No pressure.
Well, I, I, I gotta say, these election workers, I was scared. They didn't get a break.
Right.
Had trouble even going to the bathroom. God bless them, I don't, I couldn't have done it.
I'll donate pampers.
Not funny, Jen.
Well, you did have bathroom breaks, what am I gonna do?
Well, I didn't say that.
Me too.
Just a joke, just a joke.
And not to throw a monkey wrench in it, but is there any concern about if we've got two lines and twice the number of people going through here, that we might have a safety issue?
We have. Well, you, you still got the same number of voters, you're just breaking them into two sides of the road.
You just got more people crammed in the hallway.
Well, yeah, yeah, you got in and out probably through the same door.
Well, the, well, the thing is.
You could bring them in one door, though, and then break them off once again in the room.
Okay.
There's a lot of opportunities here.
Okay, good.
And I think we need Walmart greeters out here.
I think we might need Walmart greeters, that's what I was gonna, to make sure we verify which is.
Here's the form.
I'm gonna get Vicki and many other people, I say we're gonna get you plus many other people that work the elections, come in and sit down, figure out how we, how we make this work better, you know, once we get more direction from the state.
Yeah, because the people that work are the ones, they're the experts.
We're not gonna design this by ourselves. Are we all set here? The first thing I wanna add is camera, you know, under computer and office equipment.
For what?
For elections.
Yeah. It's, it's under capital improvement, and it'll be charged back, so you don't need to do that.
Let's move on then.
It'll need grounds.
Hey Bob, I have a wish list, though, when it comes to ordering those cameras.
Yeah.
Anything you want, right there.
Send it along.
Now, chief, one thing that you're gonna have to help us with then, since you brought that up. The library wants to do cameras because they had an issue over there a month ago, but there's some question on whether it ought to be all tied into one system.
No, they want their own, I already talked to them, they want their own.
Oh, that, that's, that makes it easier.
They want their own, we'll get the economy of scale with the purchase and the install, but it's a separate bill.
Okay. Do you have cameras downstairs?
I have one that does not report, it's just so when people come into the lobby, we can see them.
Oh, that don't help.
What I want is, there's so many people buying stuff online, and we also have tons of child exchanges. I want two designated parking spots up there that are under surveillance twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so my guys don't constantly have to run down to Burger King and do child exchanges. It'll be live fed right into my office if there's an incident, we have access to it, we can go back and replay it.
Burger King, what?
Custody, silent custody.
Custody, we're just doing visitation.
Daddy's got every other weekend, and mommy's afraid of daddy or has a PPO, and you gotta send a uniformed officer to do a civil standby while little Susie goes from mommy's car to daddy's car.
You got that in your budget?
Indirectly.
Kind of.
We'll work on that.
So you're just asking to join for the economy of scale.
So, yeah, and then the people who do online shopping, or they buy something online, if they wanna meet up in that location for the cash exchange, they can do that.
Like Craigslist type things, yeah.
So Chris Kenslotter actually was on vacation somewhere and seen that and sent me an email on it. And once I started looking at it and reading into it, I'm like, man, that is a great idea, and we can put child exchanges there way through the court, it doesn't tie up my, you know, two officers for twenty, thirty minutes.
Some creative signage.
Yep.
Down here.
And the, the Knox boxes, are those in, in this budget, or are we doing them this year?
Is there any way that you can buy the Knox boxes before the end of this fiscal year? We need one for you and one for us, correct?
I want one out front, one down here.
Right. And, but after we get them, before we install them, I gotta talk to the library so they don't get upset. Because it's not gonna be cheap to install them, cause they literally have, gotta carve out a place somewhere in the, in the wall.
Doug seemed to think that he can install them.
Okay, well.
He just needed them here.
Okay, well.
They're only a hundred and fifty bucks a piece.
I know, but it's installing them, but they told me it was problematic, cause you really wanna anchor it, so they can't rip it out. That's why they like it set in to the wall, but I'll leave that to you, that's your job, I'm staying out of it. Okay, so.
We can do it.
Computer and office equipment, is that ten thousand or zero for elections?
Elections. Uh huh, you already bought them, all right. No, I, I just think I said a thousand just for, you said cam, I, I just, if you could give me five hundred there, it'd be fine.
Okay. Now, are we gonna have enough operating supplies at five thousand dollars for, and enough postage?
Again, were you comparing this to the two elections in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three at eleven thousand? It, you know, again, there's increases, I think you're fine here.
Okay, so can we run down, starting with seven fifty-two, election operating supplies, give me the number, cause I'm getting confused.
Well, we spent, last election cycle, we spent twenty-five eighty-five. So if we're at thirty-five, I think we're fine.
Okay. Okay, and then machine setup?
We spent eighteen sixty-six, again, it.
So that's gotta double?
It's not a double, no.
Cause you got more machines?
I think, again, I was, does anybody wanna comment?
So twenty-five hundred might cover it?
For the machines that had to be set up, they were setting up two machines, you know, at the same time, is that correct? Well, they've gotta run through all the different.
All the calibration.
Calibrations, you know, for different types of ballots.
Yeah.
And make sure you get the right answer for the right scenarios.
I think they did, yeah, I don't think I was here for that, too, so that would be a question better asked.
I, I think it might be marginally more, but I don't know that it's.
I don't think it's gonna be double, cause there's a person here already, it's just.
Twenty-five hundred, three grand.
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, mail postage, you good with twenty-four hundred?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Printing and publishing is really going up, I don't think that's enough. The cost of paper now.
You talking about nine hundred?
Yeah. I mean, you might wanna bump that up. You spent sixteen hundred last time.
You can't shop that either, you're, you can't competitively shop that, you have to use the state's vendor.
Right. Two thousand?
Two thousand. I wouldn't go hard and wild.
My favorite barbecue place. Okay. All right, let me see.
I have no idea what transportation could possibly be.
Yeah, I, I do, Vicki would know, the transportation, when we had to go out for classes up there, they would pay us mileage, when we had to go to the classes up at Colony and stuff for our education and stuff.
But we haven't paid anything the last two years.
Yeah, but everybody just kinda didn't even turn it in.
I mean, we did, they had them at several places. It would be a lot of travel, you could usually find.
I mean, I didn't turn my mileage in when I got paid to do that, so, I mean, some people just say, eh, forget it, it's not that big of a deal. I went to Walmart when I was there, so it's no big deal.
I knew you could.
Let's leave it blank, and then if we need to move money from other accounts.
But that's what transportation is, is like going to the classes, stuff, for your employees and stuff.
So going, moving right along to building and grounds, municipal building contracted services, I left that at four thousand after talking with some folks. The reason that's there is we've gotta remove that old sculpture, put in a new base, and put in the other one. And we're also gotta put a kiosk in there, cause we have an agreement with the tribe, so. It may go over four, but I'd like to leave it there for now. Cause I, I don't know how much the base is gonna cost, it's gotta be engineered, cause it's a ten-foot-high structure, out of limestone and stainless, if he ever gets it done, but I'm sure he will. Okay, attorney fees, okay, we spent twelve thousand eight hundred seventy-seven to date. They put in twenty thousand dollars for good reason, and that's because we're really getting hot and heavy into doing the sewers, right? But sooner or later, if the sewers go forward, all that's gotta be reimbursed to the township. Like, all the Miss Dig stuff, the thousands and thousands of dollars we're spending on Miss Dig has to be put back in, we talked to Mr. Mann about this today.
Yep.
It's all, and, and.
Where we have the right data, right?
Yeah, as soon as we get the right data, and Janet, if I missed anything he said, let me know, but.
No, you're so far, so good.
So I suggest we just leave it at fifteen, and we, we wait for the mid-year review.
For attorney fees there?
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
Now, that doesn't include tax tribunal, that's up in the assessors line.
It's a different attorney, I understand, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
A different attorney.
Yes, it is.
And remember, we're not, we're not gonna be, our attorney's not gonna have to be reviewing all these new policies anymore.
Right.
So a lot of, most of this is sewer stuff and mundane stuff.
Comfortable with that brining figure, I'm not trying to get ahead of you, but.
Well, is everybody okay with fifteen on the attorney?
Yes.
Okay, streets and highways, I am not comfortable with forty-one thousand for brining, at all.
Cause it's gonna be more.
Well.
The price is going way up on brining.
Because of the new regulations by EGLE.
Yeah, and, and the demand is going up as well, they, a lot of places, they want it three times because the dust is just out of control, you can't even drive down a road, and it's just out of control.
We, we were asked to start the brining earlier today, then we're actually gonna start it Thursday. That's the plan.
Yeah, brining starts this week.
Yeah, we met with the road commission today, Jan, I, and Ron. They're all happy, of course, that we're doing brining. But I guess they didn't figure out that we were doing it twice a year, so next year, they want us to move it up ten days. And, but they're still talking about mid-August, but I talked to some of these residents, and if we're doing it mid-May, they're saying it only lasts six or seven weeks. You know, we're, we're gonna have to move that to the end of July, but I, I just don't see forty-one thousand dollars, I'm, I'm thinking fifty.
And the reason being, if we're gonna brine, they have to prep the road, the road commission has to get in front of that and prep the road, and you just don't throw the stuff on the ground and think that's gonna work. And so that, that increases the cost.
Okay, so streets, highways, contracted services was forty thousand, but I cut that to ten because all the roads, with the exception of two in the, in the capital, or in the capital improvement plan. But if, let's say you do Cressy, or, or we do the boat launch road, Navinoin. Well, Navinoin's forty-nine hundred dollars, so that's only four thousand nine hundred dollars. That's not a capital expense that's over fifteen. So Jan, would we capture it here?
Yes.
So if we have two little roads that are twenty-two apiece, and another road that's fifty, ten percent of that.
Five thousand and four, that'd be nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, so ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you have a recurring cost in the CIP?
Yes.
Yes, Jan.
As long as it's an improvement. But road brining, according to Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, what I told, what you told me was, even though it's over fifteen thousand, it is maintenance, it is not.
Correct.
It is not an improvement.
It it does not increase the life of the road.
Of the asset. Okay. All right, so refuse collection. I'd really like to talk about that. Uh, members of the community have talked to all of us in open forum about, uh, Community Bulk Trash Day. So uh, the price, uh, the M T A recommended, uh, the Onaway people? And I talked to.
Pack.
Pack, pack, something like that.
And I mean, there are others. Uh, but she said a township our size would run anywhere from three to twelve thousand.
For one.
And the biggest one they've done was Wolverine. It was twelve thousand, but six thousand of that was somebody's tires. So I, first of all, I don't think we ought to be taking tires.
No. Nobody else does.
But if you, the problem is, all these companies for these satteries are booked out.
So.
So then the first one that P I G has is September the ninth, and I don't know if that's something the board wants to do this year or wait till next year, because don't you usually do it the spring?
Yeah, but it's been how many years since it was done here, so I think.
Oh, a long time. Sal, do you remember?
If you can get it scheduled for September, I think everybody would be supportive.
I think it was only done once. It was done down at, uh.
Cooperation Park.
Cooperation Park.
I remember standing in line.
It used to be yearly.
We've done it a few times, but.
But they were very limited in what they would take.
Right. Now, they would take tires and batteries, but you had to pay a core charge on that, so you were paying for them to take that yourself.
They sent me those charges. The township has to pay.
Well, what we did at the time is that we charged for that. They had to pay extra. The rest of it was free, like washers and dryers and things like that. But as far as, uh, tires and batteries, the person that was bringing them had to pay like a core charge on that.
Excuse me, board. I I moved that we go to an open forum briefly.
Oh.
Five seconds.
Okay.
Five seconds.
Five seconds.
Okay, all in favor? So so we'd like to poll the audience. What would you like? I I know you can't speak for everybody, but.
Does the township still?
Is September the ninth good? Or is that too late? We wait till next year? What what do you think?
Chief has a question.
Yes, Chief.
As as the guy who does blight, I prefer it to be done in the spring.
Okay.
Um.
Well, next year, I'd like to do it the spring anyway.
So does the township still offer like two yards? You could come in, we used to be able to come into the park and you'd get a voucher?
Yeah, there's vouchers.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's one yard.
Is it one yard?
It's, uh, one per parcel.
One's a year you do it. Per parcel.
No, no, we're talking about one central.
Yeah, but the chief answered his question. It's one coupon per parcel to go over to, um.
The, in a county.
Over by, yeah.
So we started that when we did away with the township dump day.
So so if we have a dump day, we're gonna have to have somebody, you know, I'm gonna probably have to be there. Somebody's gonna have to be there to say, prove to me that you're in the township.
Yeah, you had to show.
Yeah, you had to show your driver's license.
Driver's license or your tax bill?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been here twenty-two years, twenty-three years, and I just now found about about the thing. So maybe you try to promote that a little bit more. You wouldn't have to have the big dump day. You have to wait till.
Put it in the newsletter.
Because everybody I talked to said they don't know anything about, um, the one roof kind of stuff.
We can do both. We can put it in the newsletter. Anybody else? Chris? On the ninth?
Yep, I agree.
Also.
Do it, do it now and do it again in the spring?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we, I would be willing to pay to have Cooperation Park dump area or wherever you decided. I don't, I'm not in a position where some of the stuff is not washers and dryers, but that I can get that stuff over at, uh, my county. You know, my vehicle won't accommodate it.
Yeah, mine won't either.
Or whatever, so can, if we would just have a big dump day with restrictions, obviously, and and you ask for donations or tell people that they've got to pay something because they're very strict about, I know, no plastic, for example. I had a vacuum cleaner in the windmill.
Over at Evan?
No, no, this was the dump day we had here.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you think about Commerce Park?
Or the airport?
I don't want to mess up Cooperation Park.
Okay, I don't care where the location is.
Yeah, but what's.
It was at Co-op Park, um, before, and I think we did it two years in a row, because I remember more than once.
That's just no work for Doug.
We created a heck of a traffic backup.
It does. There was forty, fifty cars in line. Um, so you needed ingress and an egress, so they could just make the circle, and they then they have the bins all there that they sort it and put it in. Um, there's people that take it out of your trailer or truck or whatever you bring, um, that help you do that.
So I'm going down the line here. Mike?
Uh, I know, uh, Toponabe or Mulled Township, I don't know if they still have theirs or not, but I know they used to have lines eight hours to take their stuff. They had volunteers that actually helped them take stuff off their trucks with vehicles.
Sounds like a good Kiwanis Club project.
But again, um, that's that's a big undertaking. It's a big undertaking. But it is something that, I mean, you've got Mulled Township, you've got Burke Township, you got all these townships have big dump days, you know, and.
Almost all of them do it.
Yeah, we donate a thousand dollars a year to the dump day in Burke Township. So I'm just saying that we would probably donate, uh. We would probably donate if we had a big dump day here, sure, right?
Jane?
But everybody's in faith. There's nobody that's.
Oh, no, I think.
So Chief, uh, wait a minute, before we go to the chief. Yes, sir.
There's a gentleman that picks up at Vivio's every Sunday.
I've been there many times.
For a hundred years that he claims. I have no idea. I've only been here nine years.
I think he's a hundred and nine years old.
They give you a sword.
Is he legal doing that?
Yeah.
But but he just takes them.
Scrap metal.
Oh, scrap. Yeah, he makes a lot of money off of that.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm saying, if you can, if you can get it.
It's metal. Washers and dryers that don't fit in cars.
No, exactly.
Air conditioners.
Yeah, he will, he, for an extra charge, will come to your house.
I was gonna say, yep, for an extra charge.
That's scrap guys.
Yeah, but.
I got his number too.
But there's other things. There's whole blowhors. There's, there's junk that's in in someone's barn that's just cleaned out the crap, you know?
Wouldn't he take a bite out of that if he, if it was advertised more than just people that are aware?
He'll get a couple trailers, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's, he's there every Sunday from like ten to twelve.
And he fills up?
Yeah, I know. I mean, I mean, I've seen him a hundred times. I have a rental house south of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we have some people that have concerns that the older people don't have a way to get to Cooperation Park.
So it's not age. It's small cars.
Are you talking about me again?
Thanks a lot, Bob.
That don't have a way to get it to Cooperation Park.
No, it's just a small vehicle. You have the same problem.
Is there any way we could do curbside, or is that gonna run it through?
That's a lot more expensive.
I mean, triple, quadruple.
Right, right. I think we should try this one time, see how it works. If it's too complicated, too expensive, don't want to do it again. But it would help with the blight.
I really.
It would give an opportunity for people to actually get rid of the crap that's sitting around their yard.
You might want to check with Burke Township and Holly and Delirious. It's a pretty slick deal there.
Right.
I talked to Grant. I talked to some.
Yeah, when we went to the M T A, um, meeting the other day, every township there that was present did it. Every township.
So nobody does curbside?
One or two does curbside, but they were the smaller townships, but I think most of them do the drop-off thing.
I think it'd take a week to do curbside.
Oh, more than that. That's that's a lot of work.
We got a big township. I mean, if we were more condensed like over here where we live.
Yeah, they were smaller townships.
I mean, that'd be real easy.
Hey, I just, just don't kill the middle.
No, you're right. I mean, so, boom, 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 right down the line, right?
They're already gonna take yours.
I don't know many that, no township around here that does curbside either, so.
And Chief, where would you prefer to have it?
I think the airport would be perfect because you can have people come down and around, and then there's a road that can take you right back out.
Where's that at? At the airport you're talking about? Yeah.
Would you, would you talk to Andy?
Yes.
I don't want to. No, 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 because he's got traffic control, and Andy knows the rules on F A A stuff.
He would have to notify, let him know that, you know, what was going on.
If I get the middle.
He's just moving it from middle to.
No different than when we, you know, do our driving out there. They shut the airport down, they have to notify F A A if there's training going out on the runway.
So so with the board's concurrence, I'll get more information, and I will put it on Tuesday's agenda.
Okay.
So, uh, yes, ma'am?
Do you, will there be specific items that will be prohibited?
Yes.
Yes, and we would probably try to put that on the website. Rules, times.
Hazardous materials.
Right.
And any, anything with oil, gas, or freon.
So oil is paint. We, all of us have tons of it. We're stuck around for it.
Yeah, so paint, any oil and gas, uh, no refrigerators because of freon.
Right, understood that.
But I got a lot, I got two old microwaves. I can't wait to get them.
Doesn't the county at the fairgrounds every year take paint for a charge or, they used to take TV sets too.
They take hazardous materials up at the.
At the county.
Computers.
Yep.
All that kind of stuff. They do that.
The county does it like.
Is that a Wednesday?
Is it every Wednesday?
Once a month.
Yeah, so Wednesday or something to go up there. I've done it a couple times too, so there's, there's other avenues, you know, that we would take. I would just keep it to the bare minimum.
They'll take batteries. They'll take, I think, some hazardous materials.
Yeah, so.
And I also, since we're talking about refuse, I wanted to let the board know uh, that, uh, I coordinated with the county today. Within the next two weeks, they're gonna be relaying the gravel, tamping it down, and then brining it so we won't get the potholes that we used to, that we're getting right now. So.
At the recycle place.
Right. And then if the Parks Commission decides that they want to proceed spending the four thousand dollars on Lower Marina Park, excuse me, uh, Bridgewater Escavating has a new brining tank, and, um, that would really help uh, keep the potholes down at Lower Marina Park, but I'll discuss that at the Parks meeting. Leave it up to them. So, uh, this refuse collection would have to go from two thousand to maybe eight. So if Wolverine was twelve and six thousand of that was tires.
But we're not gonna take tires. We're gonna just take.
Right, so half of twelve, uh, six from twelve is six.
Yep, it is today.
So six, two, and that's next fiscal year, right?
Yes.
So that would be eight thousand?
Agreed. Seems fair. The, just to make sure, I know not everybody's gonna be able to participate in this, but not everybody participates in everything. But what this does is create an opportunity for people that don't know how or where to get their junk out of their yard or their barn or whatever. It gives them an opportunity, and it will help blight that people have stuff stacked up behind their house or this or that. It gives them an opportunity to get rid of it, so we're not dealing with the the blight situation with that particular thing. So that, it it will help some. It's not a perfect, but everything, everything helps.
But again, it's been a big issue here for many years, so we didn't have a dump day.
Yeah.
I can tell you that.
So is this gonna help us?
Oh, I think it's gonna help everybody. It's gonna make the township, you know, bring them up to speed to Toponabe or, you know, down, a couple of smaller townships that have it, and we're good-sized townships.
Well, the reason I brought it up is it was mentioned here in public comment a few times.
Yes, it's been mentioned a lot of times over the years too.
We act like we don't listen, but sometimes we hear. Um, so Chief, you're, you want the airport?
I think the airport would be best, because I remember when we had it on a Co-op Park.
That's just more work for Doug.
Traffic, it was packed up all the way down twenty-seven, and it's not a fast thing. I mean, you.
Yeah, you're there.
You dedicated day to this to get rid of your stuff.
So could you let me know by Friday?
Yeah.
Do you have Andy's number?
I do, yep.
And tell him, uh.
What was the dates?
September the ninth.
September the ninth. And I would recommend uh, that you frame it with Andy as Airport Community Relations. And if he wants to do some of his aeronautical displays, um, he's got that club out there.
The D A A.
Yeah. Um, you can say, hey, you could put that on the side.
Make an open house to go with it.
He could make.
Yeah, because it is a slow process. People will sit in their cars for a long time. This'll give them something to look at and learn and, you know, maybe a lot of people may not have ever been to the airport before, so give them an opportunity. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, cemetery. Um, I didn't put the twenty thousand in there because that's a C I P. Um, I put contracted services of five thousand based on digging projections that were in the revenue side, so it's an offset.
Yep.
Uh, I put four hundred dollars for electric. I got a seven hundred dollar software maintenance agreement. All right. Uh, the forty-four thousand nine forty-three, uh, that was because the cemetery. I gotta replace those batteries when that happens, and it doesn't happen anymore. Uh, I have to replace the this forty-four nine eighty-three because that's all coming from the state land bank. Um, this is item number three. I got it marked now so I can fix it. So I zeroed that out, but we still may need some minor repairs like a stolen pump, you know, or a so, broken sign. I mean, five hundred dollars or something? What do you think? I mean, I I really don't know what Doug needs. If it's zero, basically, zero.
Which line I know.
Uh, this is cemetery repairs and maintenance, but not capital expenditures.
So what do you have left after you make that adjustment? Nothing.
Yeah.
Well, to go back to seven oh two, are you hiring a Sexton? Shouldn't we be posting and hiring a Sexton?
The Sexton is under eight oh two. Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
However, I zeroed that out because if you use a current employee, you can't pay them to have two jobs unless their second job is elections.
Got it.
So that means you'd have to hire a Sexton from outside the office.
We're covered right now.
Okay, so we'll leave that at zero. Is that okay?
The Sexton?
Yeah.
Question. You've got cemetery repairs and maintenance, and you've got forty-four nine forty-three.
Right, and that all comes out because that, that.
That's the, the.
That's the twenty thousand C I P plus the building.
But we didn't add in revenue.
That's why it's gotta come out.
The the sign at, uh, Oak Hill? No.
Yes.
One of the signs needs to be fixed.
Yeah, Oak, Oak Hill does.
Yes, thank you.
It looks pretty sad.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. LeMay about that, and he never got back to me, so I'll follow up.
And and the fence, the golf course fixed the fence?
No, that's our fence.
I distinctly remember asking this question, and I was told that the golf course had made a commitment to fix the split rail fence along the golf course.
Oh, split rail. I thought you meant the metal rail.
Yeah, no, no, the the split rail.
What's wrong with it?
It's probably rotting at the base. That's what split rails do, right at the crown level. They kind of rot out right there. I've had to replace ours three times.
I'll go up and inspect it.
Well, and I could, I could do that, Bob. I need to get out there anyway.
Okay.
And, and, uh, check out the metal fence that's along the road too.
That's part of the twenty thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
That's part of the C I P because that's our fence.
It is.
And the gentleman that has the fence company south of town, he said to repair half of that's about ten grand. So I'm hoping that we're gonna, if we get the C I P money, that we're gonna do the trees first because it's.
And the trees are in the C I P still? And the trees are in the CIP still?
Yeah, yes, 20,000 CIP. 'Cause I was talking to Josh today, and he said, Bob, you guys have only, you're doing a great job, but you've only scratched the surface.
Yeah, we gotta, I was down there yesterday. We, we do have to get more of that canopy out there. Now, old section is still.
We gotta get some light in there.
Too much covered. Everything is rotting because of the mold and the mildew that's accumulating on those, um, the older tombstones. And, and some of them are just fabulous. I mean, historically fabulous, and I'd hate to lose them, um, 'cause that's what happens. They eat, eat right into the granite, so, um, yeah, we gotta get rid of that canopy.
We've gotten some nasty grubs from.
Oh, I, I got three, three.
This last weekend, yeah.
But we normally cut the grass by now and grab the reefs, but because Doug has just been able to hire people, he's behind, he's gonna get there. Because we only cut the grass twice a year, and then I explained to these folks, look, we're not perpetual care, but we're spending a lot of money. Um, so.
We open that canopy, you might have to start cutting the grass more than twice a year.
What's that?
Yeah.
What'd you say?
I said, we get rid of some of that canopy, you might have to start cutting it a little bit more often.
I'd just like grass to grow.
Yeah.
Instead of mold and moss.
And dirt, yeah.
Yeah, reminds me of Germany, here above the 45th parallel, all, too many trees, all you get is moss. And moss is like rust, it destroys everything.
Yeah.
Um, roofs, everything. Okay, so what I wanted to do was take Cemetery Repairs and Maintenance, zero that out, and start from zero base. And just have the minimum necessary for minor repairs. I think the sign is important. I, I can contact Mr. LeMay again.
Okay.
$500 for the sign?
I have no idea. Yeah, we can just put aside that and see what happens.
Yeah, I think he'll do it for that, because it's gotta be sanded down and, uh.
Restained.
Yeah, restained.
It'd make a great Eagle Scout project to get it done.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
What about the, the software? How much should we save on that?
Whatever you need.
700.
Okay, it's there. I put 700 in just now. Okay, so, uh, airport. Didn't we talk about that last time? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause the 1,800 gen up bill, okay, planning commission's done. Um.
You did first.
So as of May for, now, I just wanna read your visit parks for a minute, because I wanna make sure they got enough money to do the job, even though we're gonna have a mid-year review. He's way underspent in salaries, but that's because he couldn't hire anybody. He's only spent 218 out of the 355, uh, that, uh, they were budgeted, but remember, we have to add 45,000 for the pickleball courts, uh, to that. So, uh, the new figure is 270, but that doesn't include, um, what was it? Uh, Debo Beach bathrooms. Uh, and I want, the reason I wanted to go back to this is I talked with NEMCOG. I talked with the person that Doug recommends to do the bathroom, because we have to develop a budget in order for NEMCOG to move forward. Now that the five-year plan is done and published, that's no problem, but we have to have a site drawing, so all I'm waiting on is the site drawing. And as soon as I get the site drawing, I can send that in, uh, to NEMCOG, and they, they say that they can make, um, the deadline. But by the time we made a budget, Doug and I, it was $145,000 because of the remediation of the old, the destruction, and, you know, an outdoor shower and, uh, foot wash and.
I think an outdoor shower sounds like it's flop, but these kids are swimming in an area where it accumulates like the duck remains and stuff.
Or you got that swimmer's itch you wanna wash off.
And then you get that swimmer's ear itch and stuff, and, and it's important that, you know, people have a chance to rinse that off before it starts affecting them, so I think a shower is very important.
But as I said in the last meeting, I wanna warn you that NEMCOG says sparse grants are extremely competitive, we probably won't get it. But all the requirements that we're providing is needed for the passport grant, which we can get 75%. So, you know, we just go down line, A, B, C.
Can I ask an accounting question here?
Ask Jan on that.
Uh-huh. Um, from, in, in parks, from 581 all the way down to 719, right? Well, maybe not 581, from 702 to 719, is all salaries. Can, is there a way to separate the salary in its own cost center? So we can actually figure out how much parks is costing us without adding all the employee salaries, hospitalization, vacation, all that stuff? So we have a true way of identifying the cost of the parks' maintenance itself, how much it costs. Can we, 'cause they can't dip into the salaries anyway. I mean, anything personnel-related, they can't dip into, so if we can separate that out from their main budget.
I just did it. 159,050 projected, even though the Recreation Department salaries is only 130. When you add all the benefits, it's 159,050.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, and then that way, it's not included, because I know a lot of people think, holy moly, they're getting so much money. Well, a lot of that is not in, in, in the parks' way of dealing with the maintenance. This is like set salaries and, and set hospitalization and, you know, contracts and things like that that we have to live by. And this will give the, the community an understanding of how much parks is costing us to maintain as well, 'cause.
I wanted to ask the board if we could, please go to 101, 751, 977, down at the bottom, equipment. I started just doing my own little research online. I talked to Doug just a little bit. Um, you know, Doug's using a lot of his own equipment. We discussed that, and we agreed on, uh, 8,000, but I just don't think it's enough. He's got so many old tools that need to be replaced. He needs a major power washer. Those aren't cheap if he gets a good one.
For the pier, that's essential, 'cause you get the duck poop all over everything.
So I, I'd like to ask the board's permission to bump that from 8 to 12.
Unequated.
Right.
What line, Bob?
It's, uh, seven, 977.
Two lines of the parks total on your next paper.
I mean, every, every day I talk to him, I learn more and more about his requirements, and, you know, using his own stuff does not cut it.
That, no, that.
And the snow blower that he's using to do the sidewalks, that's held together with duct tape and bobby pins right now.
Well, also, the reason we're having a problem at the cemetery is that the leaf blower that caught on fire last year, the parts still aren't in.
Right, they're waiting on the parts for that. Doug can fix it if he can get the parts, they're just waiting on the parts.
Well, maybe we oughta tell him.
Is it a backpack blower?
No.
Maybe he oughta go down to run a inspection and get some.
Um, question, isn't the vehicle that you got down here, the 65,000, that's a CIP, right?
Yeah, we took it out.
Take that one out, thank you.
Uh, but to your question, Bob, go to 12,000, let's move on.
Okay. Um, Veterans Pier bricks. Um, I don't know what you wanna do there. I mean, I can put it on the agenda, but I, I just think we need to stop selling bricks until we solve the problem, but be, be that as it may.
Do we have any on order that's not in yet?
I don't know. I don't know.
I know that they only will print them when they get enough to do at a time, so we need to find out if there's any on order that we're waiting on.
Did I, did I talk earlier about the new kind of brick?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I can tell you that just to replace that wall, the materials, no, to extend the wall, will cost, uh, immaterial, up 2,500 to 2,750. And then you're gonna have about 3,000 in labor, right? And then we gotta go through the meticulous process of replacing every one of these loved ones' bricks that haven't, that have deteriorated. And some of them, I mean, I don't have my phone with me, but some, I can't read them.
I, I'm sure they have some kind of map.
We got records somewhere.
Yeah, somewhere. Um, I know that Parks was talking about the possibility of just throwing this around, of maybe not doing it, the bricks on the sidewalk, but maybe doing a wall itself. So it's not getting sand blasted and walked on. So they're, they're discussing their options on how to move forward, um, and the composite.
I'm just gonna give them the bids. What they do is their business.
Exactly. So there, there's a lot to, you know, that's up in the air right now with that project.
Can I break the protocol again?
Yeah, go ahead, one second.
Okay, Sally. The, the problem that we have, 'cause I talked to Mr. Jakeway, I talked to North Star Stone, uh, Doug talked to the people that make the bricks, that, that no matter what we do, if, the hardest material, it, it's still gonna deteriorate. So Mr. Jakeway is saying, and the people who make the bricks are saying, North Star is saying, that we gotta extend that wall. But there's another train of thought that says we oughta have, uh, Doug brought this up, right? A vertical wall. Was that ever discussed in the past?
No. Um, I would question you, that even Disney World cannot solve the problem, and they took out all their engraved walkways.
Oh, wow.
The traffic, and also when that sand comes across there, it sandblasts them, is what it does, and it wears them right off.
So we're fighting a battle against Mother Nature we cannot win.
That's right, you can't.
They do not stand the test of time.
So what would we do?
I don't know, I assume that, uh, places like Arlington, it's granite, it's not.
Yes.
Cement, and so that they have a better, and of course, they're all out in the sun, so there's, you know, no debris building up on them and that kind of stuff, but other than that.
And they treat them. Uh, the guy gave me a whole little briefing when I was in Normandy, uh, every year for five years, that, you know, they, they clean them with a special cleaner, then they coat them with, I mean, it's amazing. Kinda like when you do your homemade marble countertops, they put something like that on it, and then when a veteran's family, uh, and then every once in a while, they're using some kinda thing to darken the engraving.
Well, they use it for the beach of Normandy, they bring the sand.
And then they take the sand, right? Even in the other European cemeteries that aren't at Normandy, and then they rub it on there when the loved ones come.
Yeah, I've seen that. I've seen them do that.
Yeah, they're fighting the elements too, but I don't think we could afford granite.
Well, I think the problem is, it was a wonderful idea, and everybody, well, we saw what the participation was. And people are still talking about, I need to buy a brick for, you know, my uncle sold and sold.
Yeah, I got 10 of them.
But it is, it's losing battle. I mean, it's like the cemetery, when they didn't make it a perpetual cemetery, air cemetery.
Can't do it.
Somebody's gonna have to flip the bill, and it won't stop. Even, I think it would take longer to do it, but even in our freezing thaw, than an upright wall, we, we'd have problems that even your walkway does.
But there might be other, uh, other ways of doing it, uh, other kinda materials that they use for an upright wall that might stand the test of time a little bit better. Um, 'cause it's not getting the walk on and grinding and stuff like that, or the sand blessing when it comes across, when it just blows right across. Depends where you put the wall, you know, sunlight, weather, things like that. I mean, it has to be down there, but it depends where, where you actually put it, you know? If you don't wanna put it right on the beach, that would not be a good thing. Um, but those are the questions for parks, but they're gonna have to look into all that, because we cannot keep replacing every brick forever at our expense.
Sally, those iron signs that are down there, aren't those terribly expensive?
Uh, not as bad as you think. I could probably go back and find out what they cost, and I know the guy that does them.
'Cause you put all the names on them. But then I, I had the gentleman at North Star, he says, look, even if you do a vertical wall, don't face it towards the beach.
Yeah.
Turn it around the other way, so the weather takes the back, I guess. Well, I wouldn't wanna be the Parks Commission, have them decide this, but we gotta do something.
You know, it's all part.
So I guess I'll figure out whether they wanna do the wall or not. Well, thank you, Sally. So, um, that closes it out. This looks like, uh, the original projected delta was 50.1% over revenue. And we are down to 2% over revenue. So I wouldn't call it balanced, but we're damn close. Now it's just gonna take a lot of, uh, discipline, uh, to be really, really careful starting, if this budget passes, depending on public input at the hearing and all this kinda stuff. So that, that's the general fund. Now we can move on, uh, to the other funds, and it, it gets even harder. This was the easy part.
Very good choice, this email.
Chief, no changes to yours, correct?
Correct, we're sold for 4.2.
Right, okay.
Could we change the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. What would you like?
The order of the agenda, I love you a lot, but three hours last week, and so far, it's two hours.
Yes, ma'am, what would you like?
Just what you show is airport forest free exhibition appointment. I don't care about the bills.
Okay.
There's bills in, right?
So I, so I move, we go to the agenda.
Right.
And go back to Budget Workshop after the agenda.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, in front of you, uh, you have a email from, uh, Registered Forester Greg Drakowski. Who has been working with the airport manager. I went out there one day, but he's got a real good relationship now with, um, uh, with, with Andy. And we would hire this gentleman at the flat rate of 2,500 dollars. Now, if we bid out the woods to cut down for lumber, we'd be at the mercy of a lack of our knowledge, and, you know, we, we might not get our full value. This guy's job is to get us full value and go out and bid out all this stuff.
So he's like a broker?
He's, he's, he's a broker, but he's a, he's kinda like Aaron Nordman, he's a expert. He knows, he, he went out there and he says, these Aspens are good, these are no good. And he, he's, I was very impressed with the way he was working with Andy. They're gonna leave, uh, Andy wants to leave a, a big buffer, uh, to the layman property, because he's our only, um, our, our only neighbor. This can save him money in the long run, because you have to have 150 feet from the center line, and those trees gotta be cleared, okay? And Andy would like to see, um, five to 10 feet cut further back, because it's starting to encroach, right? Now, when they, when the foresters come in here to do that, they'll, they'll clear cut five feet down along the runway, right? But we will have to take the proceeds from this, cost maybe 2, 3, 4,000 dollars, to grind the stumps. But that will save them maintenance over the long term, because these gentlemen at the airport were taking their chainsaws, cutting it down, then getting their tractor, driving it into the woods, right? And then having to grind the stumps take them forever, so.
But it's just too dangerous for, for novices to be doing that on their own, someone's gonna get hurt.
And then what Andy wants to do is he wants to leave a buffer of trees along the runway, right? Of, uh, 20 to 25 feet, and then behind that, all the way to where the, um, swamp starts, they would harvest that. And according to the forester, from what he told us, there are trees back in there that need to come down now, uh, that they've been there too long. And you might as well, uh, get them down, so the, the forest will rejuvenate. It's very, very similar to the discussion, it was almost a repeat of the discussion we had with the forester on the M68 clear cut. So the, the project would be pretty much the same, where on M68, we left a buffer, and then we did a clear cut, and then on the east side, we leave a buffer, right? And then on the hanger side, uh, if I heard incorrectly, those trees are not marketable. Uh, they're scrubbed. So, uh, all along that road there, all the way to where the, the fire practice thing is, that is. is, that would be left.
That's all junk trees?
Yeah, they're junk trees. Well, there's a few Aspen in there, but they're not ready yet. So we would realize net $25,000 to $30,000, of which, oh, and because of the way these loggers work, you have, they would have two years to do these trees.
Which is normal. Does the DNR say the same thing about that?
But he thinks, because we prohibit firearms, that they'll probably do it during hunting season, because they can't do it anywhere else. And then my motion would be, approve me to sign this contract for $2,500, and all the proceeds go back to the airport.
Well, it's...
Because we have, as you know, we have major safety issues out there with lines and numbers.
I'll second that motion. Now we can continue the discussion, right?
Thank you.
The point is, like you said, there's some major safety and repair things we have to do out there that's been neglected because of costs. The guys do a heck of a job keeping that place up, but they can't be expected to do everything that they're doing.
And we're not getting any younger.
Exactly. And the guys, you know, I don't want anybody getting hurt or anything out there trying to do more than what they're capable of doing. And I know they want my dad, they think they can do everything, but, you know, be realistic.
I had three recommendations from the DNR. One was Alpena, but he's too busy, because he's got that entire conservation area, right? I did call our local lumber guy, and he never got back to me. But this is the guy that's most highly recommended. In fact, he used to have Miss St. Pierre's job at the DNR as a forester. Now he's on his own as a registered certified forester. Questions?
So I have a couple of things here. It looks like, when you say $25,000 to $30,000 net, that's after we pay Mr. Drakowski, and we pay for the stump removal?
No. That's without stump removal.
Okay.
And he estimates, Andy estimates stump removal between $2,000 and $4,000.
Okay, so $20,000 to $25,000 net, which is still better than a poke with a stick.
But both sides of the airport will be able to meet the FAA requirement. And that runway is 2,000-foot runway, and on the north side, it's all trees.
Right.
No, south side is all trees. And then you've got about 1,250 to 1,500 feet on the north side. And what I like about it, it helps them the most. So, you know, when you cut, you know, five to 10 feet in, that's going to last them, what, five to 10 years?
At least.
Can I ask a question? Why do they need to grind the stumps?
Because the FAA requires it.
So you couldn't just cut the stump flush to the ground?
No.
Blow it up with dynamite.
Because they don't want any growth coming back, et cetera, et cetera. You got to, they have to grind it.
That was a good question, though.
So the other part of this is, it says that if for any reason the landowner withdraws from continuing with timber harvest once the initial field work is completed, we owe him $2,500 bucks.
Correct.
So is that solely on the board, or does the airport have the ability to withdraw from this contract?
No.
Does the airport agree with you?
Andy does.
Okay.
They're not upon it, so.
Andy does.
Buying's always better than bidding.
I agree.
I know that one gentleman out there, he's talked to a lot of the hangar owners, one gentleman didn't even want to trim back the five feet, and Andy pretty much, we got to do it.
They'll have a choice.
So as far as I'm concerned, this solves, this generates some revenue for the airport, addresses their safety issues, and actually helps them down the road with more safety issues by going five to 10 feet in on both sides. So I think it's a win-win. Even if we break even, it's a win-win. But, you know, I think the airport, when it's all said and done, will have at least $20,000 to help us with that CIP and start doing more crack sealing. They need, are you driving along that runway like I did? They could crack seal for three years.
Plus, they have no lines. You can't see lines anymore, and they have to have a line.
That's the best dangerous.
The lines have faded out.
And eventually, I mean, I may not see it in my lifetime, but eventually, that whole thing is going to have to be seal coated. That's why they put in the CIP.
Sally would like to be represented.
Yes, ma'am.
I just am a little unclear. When you talk about giving it back to the airport, you're saying, okay, we're going to give them, we're going to set aside the funds to be used for airport capital improvements, safety improvements, whatever, because they, other than paying their lease fees, which is...
Minimum.
Nothing.
Very minimum.
And anything that they don't even ask, there's a brick situation. That's what concerns me.
A what?
A brick situation.
Recreating a property.
Because it started when Norm had his house there, and he was invested in the airport, and he and the guys were much younger.
Yes.
And so the airport didn't cost the township anything.
Right.
I mean, they already owned it, they just hadn't really enhanced it. They got older, they haven't changed fans, the hangers, they haven't raised their rent considerably. I understand they pay personal property, but...
I tried to raise it, but guess what? We can't raise it more than $5 every five years.
But you could close the airport, right?
Yes, we could.
Well, I heard somebody say something about hardball at the last meeting. Maybe somebody ought to say to them, "Hey, guys, when you were 30 years younger, and you cut the grass, and you plowed the snow, you took care of all these little problems, including having Norm there and the greeter, and if they needed help in getting into town, you know, and see that pilot would make combinations, they'd go to a restaurant, whatever. That's not happening anymore. It's a man cave.
It's more than a man cave. Some people got their trailers in there. But I will tell you, I guess I was trying to be polite, these older gentlemen, there's no way they're going to do five to 10 feet for 2,000 feet. That's what this does.
Okay, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, that's, and Andy did a phenomenal job, I think it was Andy, but I'm not sure, that worked with the FAA, so we're no longer an emergency airport, so we don't have to plow it and litter. It saves the township, but the costs are just going to go up and up and up.
I know.
And I haven't seen the sense of this, signed the book, how many outside pilots have used the airport.
Funny, thank you for bringing that up. I have asked Andy and my neighbor Mark, I want to censor. I want to know, how many people are coming into that airport? We have no data. That's what you're saying. We don't know how many people are coming in, how many people are going out. I'll give you my trail cam, and you can look at it once a month and put it in your report, but we need data. And I guess I'll let the cat out of the bag now. In the Budget Appropriations Act, I will propose for the board's consideration that that be a requirement for their funding. I want to censor. I think taxpayers deserve, and it would be good for them, you know, that, oh, we have a lot of value. People come in, you know? Well, we don't have a lot of people come in, they come into Pelson.
Right.
Right? Monty, he can't land at that airport.
Too slow.
So, you know, I maybe let the cat out of the bag, but I'd like to censor.
We spoiled them for a long time, and they took care of all their problems years ago, so it wasn't a major issue. And I found out what their annual lease was, and it's good for 10 years.
So can you summarize what you're trying to say? I mean, get to...
I think there needs to be a discussion with the airport hanger guys that says, you know, whatever your small fee, I heard it was $300, it's probably...
It's anywhere between three, I saw a low of $325 and a high of $450 something.
I'm still trying to, you made a good point, I'm just trying to get to the good point you made. We're going to get $20,000 to $25,000 if we agree to this. That has to go back in for airport maintenance.
Safety maintenance.
Right, it's not their money.
Right, it's not their money, no. It's the board's money to decide what they should or shouldn't get. I agree with that. But I also agree that it can no longer be a free lunch. Free lunch. They need to be self-sustaining somehow, and I'm not sure what that is.
Well, Andy has taken up my mantra and spreading the word, my term, revenue neutral.
That's why I just said...
I want it revenue neutral. That would be the goal.
That would be a big step.
See, and there's things that we can talk to them about, like you said, have a discussion with the people that own the hangars down there. Maybe we can set up something similar, like an HOA, where they have a community fee for maintenance and things like that on top of their lease agreement. There's different things we can talk about and see how this flies, because you're right, we cannot keep funding, yeah, funding that when the expenses are getting so big, and like, they want to have more than just a crack seal. They want to redo the whole pavement down there.
And who would, if you're so much paperwork?
Yeah, who wouldn't, you know?
And eventually, they'll have no choice.
And eventually, they will have no choice.
Just like these numbers of mine.
And eventually, we should sell the property and use that income to fund other things in the township.
There's been, there's been talk of some people saying that, well, maybe, like in Florida, they have condos around their runway. Maybe that's a possibility, that we could do something like that. These are just things that people brought to us.
And I looked into that. That was Bob Murdock's idea, and I looked into that, but there's no electric, there's no gas, there's no sewer, there's no water, and everything, half of the 65 acres between the runway, north to Old Onaway Road, is wetlands.
Yeah, so, but there has been discussion of how we can make that more profitable, where they're not dipping into the general fund to get this done.
But I mean, let's face it, you know, ever since I've been here, I've heard, oh, this is a hobby airport for rich people. But then you talk to the hanger owners, and they tell you, oh, we have people flying in here all the time, but I need the data.
We need data.
And so my thing to them is, if you want to help yourself, get us the data. Prove what you say.
And it doesn't have to be...
I think there needs to be a deadline here. We can't just keep talking about this. There's got to be some action by a deadline, or we have alternative A, B, or C, whatever that's going to be.
Whether that be Chabot County taking it over, Chabot County Airport might want to take it over.
I don't think they want it.
I wouldn't.
They're having a lot of the same problem.
But I think step one is getting the data.
Well, and part of the data can be, do we have, do we have high school kids in the area who are exploring careers or learning math, or?
Three.
Three?
EAA is...
That's expensive education for three.
EAA has got a varying membership. I've been to a couple of meetings as a guest there. They have people come from all over to go to those EAA meetings. They regularly have people from Alpena and Petoskey and Harbor. There is another couple of local chapters up here. The other one might be in Harbor Springs, I'm not sure. But I, my personal opinion is, I don't want to see the airport closed. I would love to see it revenue neutral. But let's put some of the burden back on them. You know, you guys want to keep it. We're not opposed to keeping it, but help us out here, because the free lunch has got to end, because Norm Pratt is no longer with us, so...
And they're not 45 anymore.
Right, right. And most of these guys are already retired, retired, and some of them literally spend, especially in the good weather, they practically live in those hangers. I mean, if they don't live in there, they are darn close.
We just cut, cut's a bad word.
Reduced?
Their budget for next year, if the board votes to go this way, is $6,350. The revenue, not including the trees, is $1,200 for cutting the wet cement.
It's not revenue neutral?
Where's the hanger rental? Where's the hanger rental? It's on the first page of revenue. Hanger Airport.
$630.
$3,800, so that would be $5,000.
Close.
So that's close. So we got an airport for $1,500, but like you say...
Well, we don't, because we need to put all this money...
It's not going to be that way forever.
We have to put, keep putting money into it to bring it up to standards that are opposed to ours, without any input, without any money coming in from them, other than their $30,000.
So we're in open forum, if you wouldn't mind, the McGinnis family, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you live over there. What do you say?
Well, about, I think it needs to be revenue neutral. I do think they police themselves fairly well, because they very seldom would be ever here or planning taking off before seven in the morning. And because of the lighting problem, we don't see them coming in at night, so there're basically no disruption. Ask Ron, he's right beside us, and I think...
We're, we're, we're literally, our pole barn is literally on the airport heading. I mean, it's on the runway heading. But, yeah.
And you know, all the equipment out there, except for I think one...
One mower.
Is owned by them.
Yep.
They spend all their own money. So that's a donation in kind.
It's true. So the state of Michigan owns a few local general aviation airports. They own New Hudson Airport, they own North Oakland County Airport. Maybe, maybe, and I'm not a pilot, I started a couple times, but I'm not a pilot. Maybe if it got floated around, that this airport was at risk of closing, maybe the state might want to take it over.
Well, we've got to move on. Can we have a vote on the airport forestry? We have a motion in a second to authorize me to sign this contract.
Yeah, I wrote the motion down to approve, Bob, to represent the board in signing an agreement to have proceeds returning to the, the agreement being, I'm not itemizing here, returning proceeds to the airport budgets within that $20,000 to $25,000 after stump removal. That's what I heard the motion.
And Janet seconded it.
I did. I seconded it.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Okay, next item. Ex officio, MTA, quote, this is an email from the MTA. We highly, this is the Planning Commission. We highly recommend the supervisor not serve on the Planning Commission, as they have the power of appointment. If he was officially appointed by the board, which the supervisor was, the board should ask him to resign and appoint a new member of the township board to serve in that capacity. Thus, as you recall, Craig Waldron was always on the Planning Commission. I will attend the Planning Commission meetings, but it's not appropriate, since I have the power of appointment, to serve as the ex officio. So I'm asking, I'm looking for a volunteer.
We wait for the new trustee.
When do they have their meetings? Is it in the afternoon, evening?
Afternoon.
The next meeting is June 1st, 5 o'clock. Usually they're...
About 2:00.
It really depends. We have them in the evening, we have them mostly in the afternoon.
Do we want to table this until we get a new trustee?
Why don't we do that, so we get everybody to...
Yes.
So I move to table. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, emergency generator. Okay, as you know, we purchased an emergency generator across from Burger Cave. The generator is in Wisconsin, waiting to be, the reason that it's not been delivered yet is because we're not ready, because we have to have a gas line. So I am asking the board for the authority to get a quote... So, I am asking the board for the authority to get a quote from the utility company to run the gas line. I have the drawing, I have the requirements, I just need to get a cost and then I'll bring it back to the board. And they are a sole source because only the gas company can do it. So, so the motion is to authorize the supervisor to get a quote from DTE for the cost of the gas line.
So moved. Jan, seconded.
Any further discussion?
One, one question.
Yes.
Is the pad out there where that emergency generator gonna go? Is that sufficient?
The pad is not sufficient, I don't know why it was put there, I'm not quite sure, but it has to be removed, it can't support that generator, it's not big enough, it's not thick enough, it'll have to be removed and replaced.
Can we add that to, to your motion that you get a quote on how to take care of that as well? If we're gonna do this, let's do it.
I believe it's already in the package that was quoted in the first place.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, is it, is it gonna cost us extra to remove that?
Yeah.
No, it's already, it's already cost us to put it in.
No, it'll cost us to remove it, but it's minimal, I can take it out of building grounds.
Okay.
It's only a few hundred.
So really, all you need now is a quote from the DTE.
Right, then I bring it back to the board for, for further authorization. Because remember, this is reimbursed by the EGLE 1.8 note of grant.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I will second that one.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jay, bills?
Hey, you've got a copy.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you for moving that up.
Oh, thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you for participating.
So, so Jay, looks like we have a data entry error on invoice 7730 that says it's due on April 6th of 2060?
Yeah, not sure how that happened.
I, I know exactly how it happens.
That's an error.
So do you want to negate that one from going forward, Brian?
No, I'm fine with approving it, I just want to make sure that, that.
Gets corrected.
Yeah.
That, yeah.
Thank you, Vicki.
Because if you don't, when you pull the bills to pay, it won't.
All right, so I will get that corrected, any, any input or feedback?
No. Motion to pay the bills?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one, related to bills, DDA is recommended to change the audit fee distribution reviewed at the May 24, 2023 special meeting to comprehend a special cause and publish DDA revenue now. Recommendation, board motion to approve the recommended final distribution as follows. Police, 331470 to 354096, DDA 132588 to 307. Library, 79553 to 79553, no change. Sewer, 74249 to 79317. TWP Township, 2121 dot 41 to 2863. Did you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the recommended final distribution.
I'll second. Discussion?
How, why are we changing this?
We're changing this because the DDA brought up that they felt that their revenue was a special cause, not, not their general revenue, and we just agreed to it in the last meeting that we considered their revenue to be 100,000 dollars, I had to rebalance things. I had that discretion, but I tried to work with Gordon plus, where next time we do this, we'll have a procedure and we'll get everybody, you know, input to that at the very beginning instead of waiting until the very end here, so.
Well, and if we, if we eliminate extraordinary income from the calculation, then that gives them a better opportunity to budget what, what they're gonna pay year to year and, and makes it more comparable, so.
So, we're just trying to listen to the input of the stakeholders involved here. Made the adjustments, and I just wanted to make sure, came back through here for final approval so there wasn't any after last minute questions.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask the chief something, if it's all right?
Yeah.
Chief, are you okay with the increase, it's like 230 dollars?
Um, yes, because typically, I would normally pay more.
That would've been handy to know that.
All right, okay, that was my question.
That's all right, well, fair, sure.
Again, we'll get a procedure next time that makes it fair, makes it equitable, that'd be fair.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one, related to bills, we can't pay the bills without bank authorization on signature cards. CNB tax account requires board approval for signature cards to add the following. Clerk Jay Reedsmann, Treasurer Janice Dillay, and Deputy Clerk Cindy Wymer, then remove Bobby Belasovick and Eric Jacobson.
Well, that's a no brainer.
Do I hear a motion to, uh, do I hear a motion to enact that recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Second, anyone?
I'll support that.
Any discussion? Did you want to explain anything?
Uh, there's not, well, there's nothing to explain other than we're going through all of the bank accounts with Awaken and with Citizens National. And for some reason, this did not come up before, but now we're, we're gonna have all the accounts up to date. So, that's all else.
And since we're talking about this, have they communicated that they need anything from us in order to get the manager greater?
I'm working on that.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
It's not related to this, but.
Right.
Um, I've got Val Jones working on what, what they need from us, so.
Excellent. While we're on the subject too, Jan, have you reached out and, and figured out who your deputy is yet?
I have not.
Okay.
Working on it.
Because we're gonna have to do this with your deputy as well at most times.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all we got.
So, is there, is discussion done?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, let's go to the boat launch pod. I don't see any reason to change anything that Mike and Sue did, I'm good with it. Unless you want to change it, I have no problem with it. I would like to see someday another line under revenue that says interest or dividend income, but we'll let our treasurer solve that problem down the road.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see that on the police budget too, but we'll see how that goes.
What number are we on?
We are on GL 502, boat launch.
Should've known that one, but, it's going, come on, come on, I can find it.
13, 13.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm skipping around.
That's all right.
I'm okay.
Any changes?
No.
Do I hear a motion to, well, we don't want to approve that, let's just move on.
Can I ask a question, 801 Boat Launch Contracted Services for 2,500, what is that?
Good question.
756801?
I don't know. Uh, I, I think that's if they have a problem and they gotta call in somebody like a concrete guy, right?
I think there's still some work to basically complete the landscape over there where they put the new, the new spaces, yeah?
Yeah.
And, and the problem.
No, that's not the same.
Is it, okay.
The township boat docks are not part of the boat launch.
Right, 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 right.
That's, that's a separate launch.
Okay, if we're doing zero base budgeting, why do we have that in there if we don't even know what it's for?
Right, we gotta figure out what, what it is.
Well, I think the other issue that you have is that this is, this whole set of GLs is new, right? So, it's difficult to compare, can't look back on the prior.
I mean, I'd, I'd ask the same question about 940 Boat Launch Lease, what are we leasing from who?
Uh, that, I believe that might be equipment lease, but I don't know.
Well, they don't pull anything out like they would out of the lake or something, it all stays there.
The dock comes out.
Just asterisk those.
The dock comes out, that might be it then.
Right, so do we want to scratch?
Maintenance.
I don't like scratching operating supplies, what if you need, what if you need something, you know, like the things you put the money in?
The pet toilets.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's the contracted services.
That's the contracted services.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, we do have to get that popped, don't we?
I'll leave that.
Okay, and then they have a lot.
And you need supplies for there, right? Hand sanitizer.
I don't think we need, oh, you got the sellers either, okay.
Why do we need 2,000 dollars in operating supplies?
Because you want hand sanitizer and toilet paper.
Okay, good point, 2,000 dollars worth?
And you have to buy those little envelopes and that kind of thing, and the rules, we have them put it out.
We go through those boxes.
Okay, you'd be a better judge of that than that.
Yeah.
Hey, look, it's its own enterprise fund, you can't use it anywhere else, you can't steal it, you can't take it.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything that's left over goes right back into the fund and maybe someday we'll get it returned.
Okay, and that's all good then.
So let's move on to the next one, fire. That's preset mileage, we don't have a, a choice. I don't see anything wrong with that one.
Just remember the letter, that when you added it, added it up the bottom line and changed the numbers here from 862 to 866, is there a reason for that? Remember the fire authority already sent you a letter that says that costs are going up to quote them significantly, unquote.
Oh, but you haven't gotten the file.
Right, right.
Significantly isn't a number.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Well, I say until we know something else, we keep it what it is.
So why do we have a dep, oh, that's because we have 454, Jay, the contract is for 196866, we're only bringing in 196862, but we have a fund balance of 454, so it's covered.
Right.
So I think we ought to move on until we find out.
Mm-hmm, which probably won't be until the next budget year.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're, they have a calendar year, not a budget year, so, okay. All right, what's the next one?
Right now, I'm trying to find, please bear with me. Okay, we already did the DDA.
Yep.
Yeah, the sewers, yeah, the sewers.
Trying to find it.
Page 15.
Department 590.
590, yeah.
Gosh, sure.
Okay, while we're talking about this.
Oh, here it is, I got it.
Bob?
Yes, go ahead.
Can we talk about what happened at the meeting today with Steve Mann about the sewers?
All right, sewers, go ahead.
Well, we had, Bob and I had a little chit chat with Steve Mann, who is our bond counsel, and we talked to him about the amortization schedule that was changed a few years ago, there's been some questions about that. He says, he's gonna look into it, but he thinks it's set up correctly, but he's gonna look now, but he's gonna look into it and make sure it is. And everybody thinks it should be like, set up like a car loan, where, but it isn't, it's opposite. So, you don't pay a set fee every month, is what he was, like you would on a car payment type of thing. So, what we need to do is just have him look at it, let us know if it's set up correctly, if it needs to be tweaked or anything, and then he's gonna get back to us in a couple of weeks to make sure that is, because we've had some, the questions about whether, when it was changed, like about three years ago, four years ago or something, if it, if it was done.
Year and a half ago.
Yeah, if it was done correctly. And so we're going, we're, we're having him look at it and he'll let us know. So, that's where we're at right now with that, but we are looking into it, we do listen, and we are trying, so.
Okay, another thing I want to bring up since we talked about this, we have a problem. We spent in May of 2023, for phase one, we paid 81,534 dollars for an engineering bill. For phase two, in May of 2023, uh, we, I'm sorry, let's go back, I got that wrong. On, in July of 2022, we paid our first bill on phase one of 51,195 dollars. We then had to pay in December of 2022 for phase one, 132,819 dollars. We've taken that out of the general fund.
Both payments.
Uh, both payments. So, if the districts go forward, they owe us that money back plus standard rate of interest.
And that was on the, the advice of the former treasurer, and we agreed with her that we would do that.
Right, so we were gonna take out a bond, right? The board authorized a bond, we, and the board authorized the treasurer to do it at will, and in the treasurer's opinion, because we weren't making any money on our investments anyway, we could just take it out of the general fund, and that would save us about 4,500 dollars in a, a bond preparation fee as well as the interest. But now, we have another bill for, our first bill for 82,592 dollars, and a phase one bill for 81,534 dollars. All of that totaled is 348,141 dollars. Now, I am working with EPA to get 82,592 dollars of that paid in advance. But we can't recover the rest of this until the bids are in, the board decides to proceed, if they even decide to proceed, and then we close on the loan. So we asked Steve Mann, since it's starting to get pricey, right, 348 from 82, you know, and, you know, it's, it's, it's over a quarter million dollars, even if I get reimbursed, if we get reimbursed from EPA, should we now go out and get a loan because it's getting pricey? And his answer was no.
Not at this time.
Because by the time we pay all these expenses to get the bond, we should know something in three, four, five months, correct?
Weeks, not months.
Weeks, weeks, if it's months, we need to get a bond.
It's not gonna be months.
Well, I, I'm telling you, we're not gonna have bids final and in our pocket until August.
Yeah, but that's not four or five months, that's just a couple.
Well, by the time we close on the USDA loan, if everything went smooth as silk, you're looking at September.
Right.
Okay, and his recommendation was stay with it.
Stay with it now, we'll have to reevaluate if the prices come in too high, and for some reason, the people say, nope, can't do it, it's too expensive, then we're gonna have to figure this out with our advisors, but right now, we're coasting.
And, and he recommended that if for some reason it doesn't go through, we would need a 5 to 10,000 dollar loan to pay off the engineering fees, just like what happened in the 90s, correct? From what Mike told me. So I, I'm just trying to make the board and the public aware that we got a lot invested in sewers, folks. As of right now, today, 3,000, 348,141 dollars and 75 cents, not including missed dig costs and some other expenses that we haven't been reimbursed for. So, I'd like to go through the sewer fund real quick. I do know that if you see the 159,000 dollars, I believe Sue sat in this room and told us that that was at a 6% rate, we're gonna charge 6.4%. I don't see any reason to split hairs, just leave it at 159.
Agreed.
I think this is an excellent budget, they did a great job on this, Sue and Mike did a great job on this.
Talking about the DDA?
No, I'm talking about Fund 590.
Okay.
Sewers.
Oh, and there is one other thing that came out of that conversation, REUs. If we, if someone needs additional REUs, it is not an REU fee.
Right.
It is called a.
It's a connection fee.
It's called a connection fee. That connection fee should be 8,000 dollars.
Or, or, or the board can decide if there's been depreciation in the plant and stuff, it would cost, but they would have to come up with the money upfront, they, they don't get into the 40-year loan plan and things like that.
Or 32 years left.
Yeah, they would have to come up with all of them, let's just say someone came in and wanted to buy, build a multi.
Family.
Family situation, like what we might be considering down at the in-between. They would have to pay the increase of their REU costs for that. Upfront, one-time fee, and they could take out their own loan to get it. Um, and they could take out their own loan to get it, as Steve Mann said, but that's not our problem, that's their problem. And, um.
And that money should be put into the maintenance fund.
Yes, it doesn't go towards the USDA loan, because everybody's covering their own responsibility of that already. It would go into the sewer.
The existing users.
Yeah, the sewer maintenance.
Does the monthly fee go up?
No, no.
Not ever?
Well, we're not talking about the monthly fee.
The monthly fee, O and M, yes, we just raised that six point four.
No, but I mean for, you, you got, here's the example. You've got the former dentist office turned residential paying one RE. Let's say they put it back to a dentist office and they're, put an addition on the building and they need it to be two or three REUs. You're gonna pay that fee and call it a connection fee, but does their monthly bill go up?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does.
It's based on how many REUs you have.
Yeah, if it's three REUs, it goes from one REU per month.
But we're calling it a connection fee.
But the initial fee, that eight grand, is a connection fee.
I'm totally lost. They're already connected, so what are we charging them?
Because of more usage.
So what?
Alright, so if we go from one REU to three REUs, right, that's two more REUs, right? That's eight thousand dollars per REU. They owe us another sixteen thousand dollars.
Cause if they would have done it when they hooked up, originally, the fee would have been that proportionately greater.
It, it, it would, it would have been eight thousand over forty years. But because that's already been covered by the existing SAD, they have to pay that eight thousand times two as a lump sum called a connection, one-time connection fee.
And their monthly fee goes up from one to three.
Right, and then their monthly, their quarterly bill also goes from one to three.
Okay, thank you.
So, and he said that if that ever occurs, he's a great guy, he's, he's willing to help us.
Are we gonna be able to document that somehow, some, someplace? What we, it's a conversation we just had.
He's checking on it some more and we may have to amend our ordinance.
Yes, we may have to amend it.
Because the ordinance, we read it and it's so general. He said that probably what we would do is just do it by resolution. You know, authorizing six additional REUs for, uh, uh, B, uh, B, B and R condos.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, charge six times eight, it's forty-eight thousand dollars, you know, that kind of stuff. Uh, one thing I did want to call your attention to.
We still need to get a document, uh, by whatever means or motion.
Well, we may, we may need.
We could probably have Steve Mann, uh, send us an email to that effect. And then we could document that way and that would reinforce any, any, yes, and that would, um, reinforce any resolution that we have. And also we could do a policy about that.
Well, I, you've got two, two issues. You need to document what the process is to, to give them this calculation and how it works going forward. And they need paperwork that says this is what they purchased, so.
Yeah, cause they gotta go to the bank.
Right.
Okay.
It's more of a procedure, but.
Yeah, agreed. Um, so, oh, here, they already got it. Sewer hookup benefit fee, eighty-nine thousand dollars. You see that in six twenty-eight, five ninety, six twenty-eight?
Yeah, right, yeah.
So this year, somebody paid a, a lot of money for additional REUs.
So like the, the VA clinic would have to pay their REUs upfront?
Well, no, this is revenue, this is next year, this is all revenue, so they're anticipating getting that revenue in this coming budget year.
But this says that activity through right now.
Yep.
We've already gotten eighty-nine thousand.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look at, well, how that got billed.
That's something.
Is that from the VA clinic yet?
No.
No, okay. Let, let me take a look at that one.
Okay. Because, because that would have to be paid upfront.
And, and we have a, a, an agreement informally. The, the procedure at the county is that anybody that hooks up in the inner, in, anyone that applies to the county for a building permit has to come to the township first to determine REUs.
If they're in a sewers district, yeah.
But I did want to call your attention to, uh, some, uh, O and M costs.
But, but before we get to there, it, given that that happened in, during this past budget year currently, are they forecasting anything for the next budget year?
No.
Well, it looks like no, but.
It says zero to me. But, uh, let's say we sell property out there, Commerce Park, we sell all four lots. Somebody puts something on there and it's ten, they owe us six, so it's six times eight, forty-eight, plus the additional O and M.
Okay.
Um, I am concerned, but I'm gonna let it sit for now. Um, I've gotta get with our operator, because, uh, as you saw in the CIP, uh, she's gonna need pumps, but I didn't want to put it in the budget until we have the hearing, get public input, and then we determine, uh, what you wanna fund on the CIP. And then we would have to change the budget. Does that make sense? Treasurer?
Yeah, makes sense.
I, I just don't want to jump the gun until the public has their say.
No, I agree.
Okay, so, alright, so we can move on, anything on that? Uh, Wabi, Chippewa. There's some issues there. Wabi needs crack seal. And I thought that was a bit strange. I talked to the road commission. It's very common after two to three years, uh, after the settlement, doing some, some crack seal. What I don't understand, but I'm gonna keep digging on it, is usually the county does this, especially over there on Barbara, you know, where you see all the patching and the sealing. So, you know, that they, they ask, they are asking us, uh, for money for seal, and I would just like to defer that. Because first of all, it wouldn't come out of this budget, it would come out of our streets and highway budget, which is really, really tight right now until we get Club Road done. So speaking of SADs, did you wanna, Deputy Supervisor, or if I could call on you, or Trustee Vance, did you wanna give an update on, uh, where we are on Club Road, just generally? I believe they let the contract, I'm not sure.
No, you're gonna talk about the meeting with Matt today.
Part of it. Okay, I wrote this down, might be a little lengthy, but I think there's been a lot of conversation about the Club Road repaving project that has already been approved by the board, so I thought.
Excuse me, what, what I was just asking is, uh, for, for a timeline.
Timeline.
I mean, didn't they give us a timeline?
Yes, the timeline was August, September, somewhere in there, probably closer to September than August to have that done. So, yeah.
Was there some kind of a, you gotta pay a penalty or something, right? The contractor? If it's not done by a certain date, they gotta pay a penalty.
Right, right, so they've got it preliminarily scheduled for early fall, is what they kinda said, roughly. They get done with some other projects in between, might move it up, might move it back, depending on the weather, um, but early fall.
And then based on Beth, Beth Henderson's, uh, input, we're gonna add an additional sign out of building and grounds budget for no more than five hundred bucks out there at, uh.
You want a motion for that?
Yeah, you don't need it.
No?
No, because I, I have the money in my cost center.
Out of your cost center. Yeah, we're gonna put an additional boat launch sign.
I, I would prefer a motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we put an additional boat launch sign at the corner of Club Road and M sixty-eight. And, um, and I, well, I need a second first and then one discuss.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Um, the reason why I'm asking for that is because that will take some of the heavy traffic that is need-two signs, okay? Um, that will take some of the heavy traffic off of, um, Straits Highway, Indian River proper with trailers and stuff, um, trying to turn into Martha Street. It's not as hard turning into Martha if you're coming from the north going south. But it's very difficult the other way, because there's that curb bump out there. If you've ever driven a large truck with a large trailer behind you, whether it be a boat, an RV, or just a semi truck, it is hard to make that turn, especially if there's a lot of cars on Martha trying to come out of Martha onto Straits. There's just not enough room. And, and I have personally, and I think a couple of other people have too, um, visually seen people try to make that turn and they jump that curb and they're.
All the time, I saw it all week.
Yeah, so, and that's, that's, that is unacceptable. Um, that, that's just a design situation, there's nothing we can do about it. So I suggested, um, could we, could we add some signs or things, but psh, no problem. We can, we can do signs for you. So, um, I would like to amend my motion to two signs.
I'll second.
So, um.
Two signs where?
On the corner of M sixty-eight and Club Road.
From both directions, I assume.
Yep, we need east and west.
East and west.
One on each side of the street?
One facing east, one facing what?
Same pole, different, or is it different poles?
No, you don't have to have them on each side of the road.
Okay.
So if, if I'm coming from Ken's, I need one on the right side.
Right side, pointing down Club Road for boat launch.
Okay.
And then one coming from, from over the freeway bridge.
Yeah.
You would want one outside of the road.
Also on your right. We need the engineers to figure out where to place those signs, cause.
Well, the road commission will do that.
Road commission will do it, we just pay it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any other?
Just on the cost savings. The cost savings over the one ninety-three. So, the road commission said that they expect, that they, they have an initial bid, I think it was for one seventy-seven. You still have to add in the engineering fees, but to quote Mr. Paul, he expects it to come in more than five thousand under what's already been approved.
Right.
Didn't want to venture how much under, but five thousand or more under the one ninety-three figure.
Okay.
And I would also like to add that I was very pleased with their level of cooperation, with the time that they spent with us. And, and I think going forward, that, that, that partnership, that level of cooperation is gonna be good for, for all of us.
A lot of communication.
Absolutely. Nothing adrift cereal about that meeting whatsoever, nothing.
Alright, that wraps it up. Uh, public comment, please. Yes, sir. Do my guests.
My name is Patrick McGuinness, and I'd like to address an issue that might be doable with Oak Hill Cemetery. And, uh, that is putting a sign down at the end of the road coming from the cemetery in Chippewa Beach by the golf course pointing up the road to the cemetery. Everyone here knows where it's.
Say, say what? Like the boat launch signs?
Or something just saying Oak Hill Cemetery with an arrow pointing up the road. Everyone living here knows where it is, but a lot of people come from out of the area. And it is a hard road to see sometimes. It looks like it's part of the golf course. That's all, thank you.
I know I'm not supposed to respond, but I'm taking notes. Thank you. Public comment, Chief?
I'm here.
Ma'am?
I'm here.
Okay, um, board comment. I'll, I'll start. I, I wanna thank Mr. McGuinness for, uh, helping me with, uh, giving a modern sixty-five inch screen and a, what do you call that, sir?
Generator.
And no.
It's a cart.
Yeah, it's a cart, so I got that on order. And I think that's, uh, with our, uh, present funds for this fiscal year, I think it's really gonna help make this easier and easier to see for everybody, cause we can put it right here or behind me or, you know, something a lot closer. And maybe we could even use both, who knows? So, um, yes, and the road commission was great today. And Chief, I want to thank you for coming to these meetings on your day off. And, um, I'm looking forward to, I, I think I read your report for getting a new officer.
I hope so.
Did I read that correctly?
Um, I'm in the middle of a background check right now.
Okay, yeah, well.
So far, everything's looking good.
Okay. I guess you, why do we need a background check, oh, please? Any other board comments?
I have one, but I'd like to go for last.
Okay.
If anybody else has a question.
Uh, no, I'm good.
I'm good. Okay, um, I understand there's been a lot of conversation about Club Road and the repaving project the township board has already approved. And this section of Club Road between Martha and sixty-eight has been in need of repairs for many years. And this has been on the township infrastructure radar for over ten years that I know of. Normally, road repairs would be funded by a special assessment allocated to each property owner along the road by authority under the Michigan Public Act one eighty-eight. This particular road repair project has many extenuating circumstances which prevented the township to establish the necessary funding needed as to date and delayed much of the needed repairs. So it is by far the worst road in the township and something has to be done. So let's break down the issues. Number one, the number of affected property owners are about twelve. The cost of the road repair is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars. The Club Road is rated as a secondary or a local road. There are three types of roads in Tuscarora, a trunk line, primary, and local. The traffic count of this section of Club Road is approximately twenty-five hundred vehicles per day. And that doesn't include the summertime, uh, summertime traffic, as this was done the first part of June before everybody showed up. The DNR owns the west side of the road, but the state of Michigan does not participate with special assessments as a rule. The township owns Maria Park and a township boat launch located at the end of the road, which generates some of the traffic, although seasonal. In all road repair projects, the township has contributed ten percent towards that cost. This year, the township, oh, this year, Chippewa County Road Commission is contributing an additional twenty-five thousand dollars towards the project. And this year, the township has approximately a hundred and thirty-three dollars left in uncommitted ARB funds, which we'll put, talk about that in a minute. Currently, the township has a balance of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in the streets and highway fund in their line item. So these are the questions the township board had to consider. After the forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in township and Chippewa County funding, there's still a balance of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. This is the problem, where would the rest of the money come from? If we were to actually assess each property owner, their share of a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, the assessment per property would pro, be approximately twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars per property. There's a problem with that. The road repair most certainly would have some benefit to the property owners, but how much is that benefit? And that is very important for us to determine. Due to the high traffic count of twenty-five hundred vehicles per day, the general public's benefit far outweighs the benefit contributed to each property. And in this case, if the township persisted with a special assessment, the residents of the district would most certainly present a petition of the required twenty percent of the property owners and would probably reject the assessment outright. If by chance, the special assessment district did indeed pass, the individual property owners would most likely take a set tax review in the court. And since the benefits do not even come close to the assessment costs, they would win their case and the township taxpayers would pay for the assessment as well as determining court costs. According to the case law, mid, of the Michigan Supreme Court, Fluckey versus City of Plymouth, this expressly states, "The assessors could not reasonably believe that the improvement of Sheldon Road, considered in an overall project, produced a benefit to those specially assessed over and above the general benefit enjoyed by the community as a whole, or that it increased in value the abutting pres, the residential land." This is not to say that the adjacent homeowners may not be required to pay their share of the cost of this new road in common with the other taxpayers of the city, but the theory of the special assessment is that a special benefit has been conferred over and above that conferred upon the community itself. Supervisor Ridley proposed a five hundred dollar flat fee, special assessment for each property owner, but that would only account for approximately six thousand dollars. The five hundred dollars per property is probably close to the benefit that would be incurred for each property, but we would still be short one hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. So we're still trying to figure out where the additional funding would come from. How much of the responsibility falls on the township? Because the township. Because the township owned parks and the boat launch at the end of the road. Is it more than just the customary ten percent? So as a township board official, I personally believe we are responsible for some of the road's decay, and we also have to protect our infrastructure that we have built at the end of the road. Without reasonable access to our facilities, less people will use our facilities, and the boat launch money we depend on for the launch maintenance and improvements would certainly diminish. So do we let the road go back to gravel? And would it have negative ramifications for our parks and boat launch? EMS, school buses, delivery trucks, and police vehicles? Can we use the ARPA funds from the federal government for road, for road improvements? Yes, we certainly can. Should we use some of the township's budgeted streets and highway fund to help pay for this project? Yes, we can. Is it feasible to dead-end the road that is used by so many, as a bypass around Indian River proper? And what would the traffic look like if all vehicles used Martha Street to Straits Highway? The supervisor, deputy supervisor, and I had a meeting with the road commission this afternoon, and I asked a specific question. The answer was that they would vehemently oppose such a request, and they do not think it would pass MDOT's okay as well. The traffic in Indian River proper would be too congested, Martha Street would be backed up with the additional twenty-five hundred vehicles trying to get through that intersection of Martha and Straits, as well as larger vehicles, trucks and trailers would be, it would make a traffic nightmare. A traffic light would not be approved, and even if it was, all this would be eliminated if Club Road was not blocked off. There has been some conversation on rerating, rerating the road to be a primary road instead of a local road. This seems also very unlikely, because there is an algorithm MDOT uses to determine the road ratings, and we would literally have to trade a portion of another primary road to assign Club Road that status. We have no other primary roads in which to change to a local rating to allow Club Road the primary road status. So this is where we are. The township board voted to commit to the Club Road project. The project has been confirmed, and the project contract has been signed with the construction company. The project seems to be coming in a little less than expected, but the initial estimates were very close. The funding for the road is as follows. The project budget is a hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred dollars, depending on what the final cost is. Twenty-five thousand of that is from the Sheboyden County Road Commission contribution. Nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty is from the township ten percent contribution. Ten thousand dollars was from a private contribution. Now you remember, Mike Ridley proposed a five hundred dollar property assessment, and that would come in for about six thousand dollars. A private individual offered to pay that assessment plus, so we're actually making four thousand dollars over what Mr. Ridley proposed. Seventy-one hundred and fifty dollars, seven thousand one hundred and fifty, came from streets and highway fund to offset some of the extra burden due to our responsibility of having our parks and boat launch that has contributed to some of the road traffic. And one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars is from our ARPA uncommitted funds. Now I wanna explain something about the ARPA funds. There is specific talk on the MTA website, among other places, that because of the budget in Washington DC, they are considering, pretty strongly, about pulling back all uncommitted ARPA funds. If we don't use them, and it could be as early as the first part of June, depending on when they get this budget taken care of in Washington DC, we could lose the uncommitted funds. So because this has already been committed, as far as we're concerned, it's, it's gone.
It has been committed.
Yes, it's already been committed. We will not lose it, but if we didn't use it, we could very well lose that money. So I'm just, I'm just putting the facts out there of where we were, what we considered, and why we ended up where we are. And I hope this eliminates some of the talk that's going around that has some missing facts and some misinformation, and just letting everybody know why we did what we did when we did it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Chief?
I move to adjourn.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being so patient, chief.